All right, thank you. We have returned from closed session. And I would like to make the following disclosure. By a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney’s Office to defend the case of Ju versus Corbin as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:05 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, April the 24th, 2024, and it is 6:05 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is being closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight’s meeting replays were revised and they will be replayed on Saturday, April 27th at 7:00 PM and Friday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/MetroCable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to the deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will be moving into our roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
President.
Councilmember Spees.
President.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
We have all five in attendance.
All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement, and would the Vice Mayor please read our land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove’s first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of their bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you for that. Next up is our pledge of allegiance. We have our former colleague here this evening, so I would like to call out Supervisor Pat Hume to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please address the flag and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And that first item being Item 4.1, which is proclamation honoring May 5th, 2024 as National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous People.
Thank you. I will read the proclamation, but at this time, I would like to call up Chairman Jesus Torongo of the Wilton Rancheria. Welcome, Chairman. All right. National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous People, May 5th, 2024. Whereas on May 5th, we remember, honor, and take action for the lives of all missing and murdered indigenous people whose lives have been taken as a result of the ongoing crisis and for those who may be facing violence alone. The silence of tolerance and inaction is being challenged and ends now. And whereas the state of California has the fifth-largest caseload for missing and murdered indigenous people in the United States, as California is home to 109 of the 574 federally recognized tribes and holds the largest population of the Native American people in the United States. And whereas indigenous women and girls are murdered at a rate nearly 10 times higher than the national average, and where four out of five have experienced violence and are targeted for murder, exploitation, and abduction in California’s urban, rural, and reservation populations, disappearing at alarming rates with very little public visibility and justice. And where there is no comprehensive estimate for the number of indigenous people who are missing or have been murdered since the beginning of colonization. And whereas the city of Elk Grove is committed to spreading awareness of our indigenous people who have gone missing or have been murdered, tortured, raped, trafficked, assaulted, and those who have not had the proper attention for justice. And whereas we act in solidarity with our city, state, and nation, and most importantly, we stand with our local tribal community, Wilton Rancheria, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, as we recognize the National Day of Awareness and action for missing and murdered indigenous people, always seeking to build upon and support our indigenous communities to stop this epidemic and heal with our communities and as a state. Whereas we must continue to bring awareness to the issue of missing and murdered indigenous people. Only by doing so will we increase accountability of the systems and institutions that have led these crimes go silent and bring justice to the families of the missing and murdered. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims May 5th, 2024 as National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous People in California, in Elk Grove, California, and urge all community members within the city and our state to keep the spirit alive and take action for all our missing murdered indigenous relatives as we work to end the violence being committed against them. Thank you, Chairman Torongo, for being here.
Kuchihia ma. Kaniyasa, Jesus Torango, tribal chairman of Wilton Rancheria. And just want to say I thank everybody here tonight, this evening, that had a part in this proclamation. We’ve said for many, many years that our government and your government were the same, and we could get a lot of things done together because we’re stewards of our rightful communities that share a common space. MMIP is something that is, not only affects my community, it affects our community. And so for that, it’s an honor for us to be here accepting this tonight because it shows you guys are in the fight with us. And it also shows other cities how they should be responding as well. You know, California being the fifth-largest caseload in the United States, it’s not an us problem, it’s a we problem. And so I have some stuff here prepared I’d like to read just to enlighten or bring light to this issue that we have in our community. On behalf of the tribe, the descendants of the first stewards of this land, I would like to thank you for recognizing May 5th as Murdered and Missing Indigenous Peoples’ Day of Awareness. A study by the National Institute of Justice found that more than four in five Native women, 84.3%, have experienced violence in their lifetime, including 56% who have experienced sexual violence. Two in five Native women, 43.7%, have been raped in their lifetime. Native females experienced the second-highest rate of homicide in 2020. In 2020, homicide was in the top 10 leading cause of death for Native women aged 1 through 45, and has been as high as number two in many recent years. For some perspective, Wilton Rancheria has just over 1,000 citizens. Statistically speaking, that means of our 483 women and girls, 387 will experience violence in their lifetime. As a husband, son, father of six, I know that something must be done to address this epidemic. Resolutions like this are more than just ceremonial. They serve as a commitment that we will continue to work together as sovereign government entities for the recognition and the safety of all our citizens and communities, knowing that we all, as elected officials, have the duty to lead the fight to keep our most vulnerable members safe. Finally, I would like to also take a moment to invite each and every one of you to the Second Annual MMIP Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 1st on the west steps of the state Capitol to hear from survivors and family stories, as well as to learn about what is being done in this state to address this crisis. The evening will culminate with a candlelight ceremony and the lighting of the Capitol dome red to raise awareness. And so again, on behalf of my people and my citizens, I want to thank all the elected officials that are here tonight and doing this. This is something that, it’s our issue, it’s our problem, and we need to raise the awareness, and we’re doing that. Next up is the atonement and the work that we’ll do hopefully soon to come. But thank you on behalf of my people by protecting all people.
Thank you, Chairman Torongo, for those beautiful words. You know, we stand in solidarity with you and the community. We will come down there and present this to you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Please join us. Please join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
on the Elk Grove City Planning Commission. And helping to present that, almost a council member, really, will be Councilmember Kevin Spees, who served with him for many years.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Murphy, could I ask you to come on up to the podium, please, sir? Good to see you. It’s not often that we’re on different sides here. We’re usually up here together.
I hope you’re surprised as most people are me wearing a tie.
Yeah.
First time in 17 years in this chamber.
Okay. I have the honor of reading this tonight, and just very quickly, I think many of us have had the opportunity to serve with George in different ways. And I had the honor to work with him on the Planning Commission for a number of years. And as I said in a different meeting another night or two ago, I learned a lot from George, and I appreciate all the perspective that he’s given. So it is a great honor to me to read this for you, George. “The city of Elk Grove recognizes and appreciates George Frederick Murphy. Whereas George Murphy was appointed to the City of Elk Grove Planning Commission on February 8th, 2007, humbly serving his community, building awareness and respect for the past, giving context and meaning to our present, and offering guidance and wisdom to face our collective future. And whereas George shares a passion and sensitivity to take on the challenges of the evolving modern world, encourages our community towards progress, and reserves a remembrance for all to be mindful to respect a collective set of proud heritages and shared traditions. And whereas George serves as a stalwart guide, having mentored and assisted onboarding over a dozen members of the Planning Commission over the span of his tenure, building on a long history of involvement in the local community, where he shared his expertise and vision to bring community planning to the city of Elk Grove, serving with the highest level of professionalism and integrity, and he will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes and celebrates George Murphy for his 17 years of dedicated service on the City of Elk Grove Planning Commission, extending our utmost appreciation and respect and commending George for his exemplary service to the community of Elk Grove. Signed this 24th day of April, 2024.”
Mr. Murphy, the floor is yours.
Thank you for that, Kevin. And again, thank you for the other night, too. Your words went to my heart. This is a little bit harder than I thought it was going to be. I’ve been thinking about this since my last meeting, and every one of you up there I’ve had good relationship with. You know, I’ve tried to bring my perspective on various projects, let you know why I voted certain way sometimes, and you’ve listened to me. And I want to say, Mayor Singh Allen, you have raised the awareness of the Planning Commission to a higher level with your comments from the day. And I really appreciate that, and I think all of our commissioners do. Before I get too far along, I do want to introduce my family.
Please.
They’re here tonight. I have my wife, Bonnie. My daughters, Debbie and Jenny. My sons-in-law, Mac and Matt, and say that twice, past three times. And one of my grandchildren, Naomi.
Wonderful.
The only one that wasn’t busy with school and sports tonight or work, so. I’m probably glad they’re not here because we have a room full and we have people in the hallway. But staff, I’m not going to name people individually because I’ll forget somebody, and I don’t want to do that. But my interactions with staff have been not only professional, but personal. I’ve come to know many of them over the years, with families. Christopher. I’ve known him and his wife since before he knew her. But I can tell you right now, staff’s patience with me, asking all my questions, explaining our policies so I understood them better, is most appreciated. But I can tell you without a doubt, and the people listening, our staff is totally dedicated to this city. And from my perspective, after setting up there 17 years, you folks are what makes a city what it is. I’ve dealt with, of course, planning most of the time, public works, the police department on occasion, and even CCSD. And they’ve all just given me the information that I needed to make a decision. And setting up there on that dais, we take into, as a Planning Commission, we represent the whole community, even though we’re from various districts, but that’s required so you can, other commissioners can have a perspective of that district. But I, living in a rural area, that was my heart and soul. I wouldn’t have been up on that dais if it hadn’t have been for my community asking me to apply and supporting me in my application. And for them, I am very thankful that I was given the opportunity to set up there and make decisions that were sometimes hard and not popular. But I can tell you that when it comes to making a decision, we take in more than just what’s in the staff report because there’s a lot more behind it. It’s called a sausage mill for a reason. You got federal law, you got state law, you got county agencies, various other agencies, and of course, city policy. All that goes into the decision-making process, and a lot of folks, I fear, they don’t see that. And it’s understandable. But when you learn what goes on into a project and you start asking questions, you educate yourself, and staff has educated me into what is needed to put together a staff report and get a project up on the dais for consideration. So for that, staff, all of you, no matter which department you’re in, I am truly So with that, I think I’m done. And I’ve been known to say a few words lengthy times up from the dais, but sometimes they’re necessary to explain to folks. I’ve always tried to make people understand why I voted a certain way, understand my reasoning and what went into it. And frankly, sometimes you got to be a little straightforward with people, even from the dais. But I think they come to respect that, when they know you’re thinking, and you’re not just trying to pull the wool over the eyes. You’ve given it some thought. And that’s what I’ve come to learn from. I came on this Planning Commission with a lot of skepticism about what went into a project and how projects got, you know, up for us to consider. But I learned that the sausage mill is, it is what it is, a sausage mill, and we get to, out of the end is a project. So I thank all of you for your support, both past and present council members. One last thing. Pat Hume here tonight, and he used to set up there. And I remember being in the audience, and him and his four colleagues on the Planning Commission, getting into shouting matches and standing up and hollering at each other. And I thought they were going to come to blows. But they got us our general plan. And in that general plan, it calls out the rural area. And his words were the night he transitioned to the Board of Supervisors. Please, please, respect that being the rural area. And I hope that going forward, anybody making a decision, whether it’s you folks or somebody who may replace you, that you heed his words. But please remember that there’s been a commitment made, almost a 25-year commitment made, to the folks in the rural area who worked many hours in this very chambers, 11, 12, 1 o’clock in the morning, putting together that general plan and those protections that are built into the rural area. We have to honor those. That is a lifestyle. The lifestyle makes you love it. When you put your blood and your sweat and equity into a piece of property, whether you’re farming or not, it means a lot to you. And I’ve been out there for 37 years now, and I loved every minute of it. So please, respect the rural area, remember what we’ve done in the past, and carry it forward. And again, thank you for the proclamation.
If I may.
Please, you may.
I did submit a speaker request.
Yes.
Everything was above board, and I have to say, it was very difficult to fight the urge to respond to the prompts from City Clerk Lindgren having you back in this room. But I’m here to support an old friend and to honor, and I’ll try and keep this brief because I know you have a lot of agenda in front of you, but it’s worth taking a little bit of time to honor a 17-year public servant. And so I brought with me a proclamation, and I wrote this proclamation myself, and that’s important because we’re going to get to a piece in here. I’m not jabbing you, I’m calling out how much character you have.
I can’t believe it’s that short.
Well, I had to condense it down. And so it says, “Congratulating George Frederick Murphy on his retirement from the Elk Grove Planning Commission, whereas on this day, April 24, 2024, Sacramento County District 5 Supervisor Pat Hume is joined by Elk Grove City Council, family, friends, and community members from throughout the Sacramento region in honoring George Frederick Murphy as he retires from his position as a City of Elk Grove Planning Commissioner. And whereas George first served his country in the United States Air Force, then served his region as an employee of the Pacific Gas and Electric Company, and finally, his community as a City of Elk Grove Planning Commissioner. And whereas George was first appointed to the Planning Commission on February 28, 2007, he is to date the longest-serving Planning Commissioner in the City of Elk Grove’s history, having been a part of numerous general plan updates, the rural road standards, many commercial and residential projects, and numerous civic facilities.” This next part is the part where I want you to know I’m not jabbing on you. “Whereas George had an unsuccessful bid for the Elk Grove City Council...
Jab you.
...against the then-incumbent and current county supervisor... That’s right. ...the dignified manner of that race led to an ongoing friendship and mutually beneficial counsel over the ensuing years. Whereas during George’s tenure on the Elk Grove Planning Commission, he served as mentor and institutional memory for many other commissioners, both prior and present, even agreeing to remain in place in order to provide continuity during turnover on the commission. And whereas George understandably now desires to fully enjoy retirement and spend more time with his wife Bonnie, their daughters Debbie and Jenny, and his grandchildren. And whereas George has been a reasonable and steadfast proponent and defender of the rural area of Elk Grove, where his influence will be missed but never forgotten. Now therefore, I, Pat Hume, Supervisor of the 5th District, County of Sacramento, State of California, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, here by extent, sincere appreciation to George Frederick Murphy for his 17 years of dedicated service to the people of Elk Grove, and offer very best wishes for health, much happiness, and many blessings in all the years to come. And I can say without a shadow of a doubt, you might be my second favorite former Planning Commissioner of all time.”
So before we come down, I want to give us an opportunity to also share some words for you, George. I want to thank you personally for being a wonderful mentor for me when I was first elected mayor. You were one of the first that reached out, and we’ve had many conversations, and you’ve just been a friend, but also a reminder of the greatness of Elk Grove and all of our diverse communities. Diversity is not just ethnic diversity, but also geographic diversity, and the rural community is special, and you made it special. And the way you handled, you know, difficult decisions and how you got there, you always gave me the respect and courtesy beforehand to share your thoughts so that I can also include them in my own deliberations, which was really helpful. And I think that that is, you’ve helped make projects better. You’ve helped make Elk Grove better with all of your involvement, not just on the Planning Commission, but the greater community. And I needed your advice, again, in filling that vacancy. And having your counsel and advice on a very difficult decision was instrumental, and I want to thank you for being a part of that process because the rural community is important, and it was important for me to continue to have a voice there. So thank you for all that you’ve done for our city, for the Planning Commission. We thank you. We are better because of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bobby.
Any other questions? Councilmember Suen.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. George, you are so interwoven in this community. I love the way that your go-to is building connections with everybody you meet and come across. And as someone, I think I’ve known you for nearly 20 years now, then as a project applicant, getting to know you, and we connected over my uncle and you working at PG&E together, you always take the time to build that personal relationship in order to work through solutions, you know, work through issues in the community. And everybody has witnessed here tonight your dedication to this community. I greatly appreciate your service. I greatly appreciate your service, your friendship. Like the mayor and others, you know, we've had our conversations on the phone about a lot of things and getting your counsel and guidance before I came up here. And I'm so glad to meet your family, especially your wife Bonnie, who I can now picture, who was always on the phone when I was calling your house. So now I know how to face the voice. So thank to all of you for allowing George to serve this community and sharing his time with us as well. Congratulations on your retirement, friend. And we still look forward to seeing you out in the community.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer, Vice Mayor.
I really appreciate our relationship, George. Never afraid to pick up the phone and call each other to talk about different issues, shared thoughts, having coffee, just me and you. And sometimes Bonnie would join us. And we normally would start off with a 30-minute meeting that turns into a two-and-a-half, three-hour meeting because our conversations are deep, they're interwoven. And we talk about everything from life, what's going on in Elk Grove, how to preserve the rural community. But more importantly, everything was done with respect, tact, skill, and just a sheer care and love for Elk Grove. And all those conversations we've had dating back to my being on CSD Board were all inclusive with all those key tenants in mind and what's best for Elk Grove at the end of the day. And I really appreciate that. It's a friendship that I don't take for granted. And knowing that you are going to be spending some good quality time with your family now is definitely something to behold. And I really want to thank you for your service to Elk Grove for all these 17 years on the planning commission. Because your unique approach and philosophy on how things are definitely play into the bigger picture of what's best for the city as decisions are being made. Because none of the decisions that were made on your watch were easy decisions. They were very, they were very skillfully done. And some folks may not see the merit or the benefit of those decisions, but in time, they will look back and see that wisdom. And that, for me, is a hallmark. And I greatly thank you for that and definitely looking forward to our continued coffees in the morning as long as Bonnie will let me have, come over. But thank you, George.
Thank you, Rod. We'll always have muffins, don't worry.
Councilmember Spees.
Wow, this is good. I get three opportunities here. So I guess on this one, I can get a little bit personal. I grew up in the rural area. And so that's something that, I mean, you didn't grow up in the rural area, but you were there in my youth. And so we share that, right? We share that rural opportunity or rural connectedness. And, you know, the occasion of tonight of your retiring reminds me of many of the other advocates that were advocating for the rural area and the special place that it was, or is, and continue, better continue to be, right? And so, you know, I can't, I certainly can't recall all the names, but I, you know, Sharon Peters, right? Pinkerton, excuse me, huh? I said Shirley Peters, didn't I? Oh, sorry, Shirley Peters, my apologies. Thank you for correcting. You know, Ms. Pinkerton.
Leo Fassler.
Leo Fassler, right? And of course, Sharon in the back of the room, who I've known since junior high school, always been an advocate for the rural area. And so I just thought, you know, it's an appropriate time to remember all of those who have been fighting for the rural area for so long and were important parts of that general plan establishing the rural area. And so with that, I'll end. But thank you very, thank you for sharing a little bit of this time with them. Thanks, George.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles.
George, I will always know you as Chair Murphy.
Don't forget it.
I will know you as Chair Murphy. When I first got on the planning commission, you took me under your wing. And we had lunch, which was also three hours. Still remember, and it was Subway. Thank you, Bonnie, for picking up those sandwiches. In the meantime, while we were having lunch, we also shot a couple pellet guns in the squirrels. So you're gonna be busy now that retirement's coming. But 17 years of service, thank you. You know, as Supervisor Hume said, you know, you started off in the military. And that means a lot to this country, a lot to our city. Not many people serve. We have planning commissioners who are veterans, city council members who are veterans, and those who still continue to serve. But just thank you for everything you've done for this community. The first project that we took was in the rural community. I won't forget that one. The first big project that came before the planning commission, I cut my teeth on it, and it was three people who had to vote on it.
That's right.
We've gone through some tough decisions and I learned from you every step of the way. And I know it wasn't me only on the planning commission. I know Councilmember Spees also learned from me as well. And Planning Commissioner Fernandez, Planning Commissioner Oscar Okon, Planning Commissioner Poole, we've all learned. You were able to navigate through 2020 when we didn't know how to do the teams and everything. And just thank you for everything that you've done for this city. It means a lot. And we're gonna continue to put the rural community in front and making sure that we definitely look out.
Thank you, Sergio. I think that one big project we have is the first time I saw you sweat bullets.
Commissioner Murphy, everyone.
I thought we were gonna tell anyone I was sweating that day.
All right. Now you get to hold this. Pat, you wanna come up too?
Oh, yeah.
Let's do both. Even? Well, here we go. One more time. Thank you.
All right. Get your family.
Bonnie, kid.
Would the family please join?
I'm gonna need my tie back, George, okay?
Yeah, why don't we just?
The family in the middle?
Do you want us still here or do you want just the family?
Yeah, just the family.
Yeah, just the family. Here's this one. Let mom take it back. Let mom take that.
Okay, I do want to thank everybody for their very kind words. They went from my ears right to my heart. And I'll be talking to you.
We know you're not going anywhere.
No. I might have signed off on the planning commission, but I'm not signed off on the city yet.
Thank you.
There you go.
Elk Grove loves you.
We'd like to know who that first favorite.
Come on, you, you knew that was gonna be the answer.
I just wanted him on record saying.
That's hilarious. All right, thank you. We will now transition to our next item. And that is item 4.3, proclamation recognizing April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day. And presenting that will be Councilmember Robles.
Good. We have a representative from the SacTru Foundation. How are you doing? Good to see you today.
It's good to see all of you, too. Thanks for having me again on the eve of another Arbor Day. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Colin Fagan. I am the Operations Manager at the Sacramento Tree Foundation. I manage all of the reforestation and ecological restoration initiatives at Sacramento Tree Foundation. It's an honor to be here again in Elk Grove to commemorate another Arbor Day. We, the Sacramento Tree Foundation, are incredibly grateful to have partners that are so committed to the success of their urban forest, especially partners like Elk Grove and Alex Lepre, who, without their transformative visions of public spaces in Elk Grove, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we have currently been going through. Along Franklin Creek on the Toby Johnson Bike Way, we've planted over 2,300 trees thus far. This year, we got an amazing grant through SAC Sewer where we were able to do the next steps of reforestation and restoration for the creek. In that project, we've been able to plant more riparian species. So what we're really aiming for, right, is creek health, community health, and ecological health. With the trees that we're planting down on the creek, we're able to manage erosion, manage pollution, and pollutants that could run off straight from the street to Stone Lake National Wildlife Preserve. We're providing shade for community members that utilize the bike path to get to school, to recreate, to run on. And we want to bolster our urban forests in a way where we're managing into the future. We couldn't do that without Elk Grove and their vision of the future, without Alex Lepre, without our partners like SAC Sewer, Hedro Farm, which this year helped us plant an acre of wildflowers at the top of Franklin Creek. Yeah, I'm very excited to be here. This is the second time we've done this together. I hope to do this significantly more into the future. It's an honor to do this every year. The Sacramento Tree Foundation is dedicated to equity, providing shade, and restoring habitats in the Sacramento County. And places like Elk Grove are the best place to do it. There are so many people who are excited about moving forward, being sustainable, creating greener and happier ecosystems for both their local ecology and their communities. So thank you very much. I'll keep this short.
Thank you, thank you.
Colin, you beat me to the punch because I was gonna read the proclamation for Arbor Day, April 26. But you know what? I'm equally as excited too. And I know usually we read the whereas, but I'll speak from the heart on this one because I've seen what the Sacramento Tree Foundation has done in our region and in our city. I actually live right off Franklin and White Lock. So I've seen the trees, especially while jogging. And I know that they're gonna bloom and grow to be something amazing for shade. I'm just really appreciative, and the city is, for everything the SAC Tree Foundation does. The shade trees that you provide in low-income areas in the Sacramento region, which is something very impactful. The 2,000 trees that you've planted, that you're continuing to do. You know, we're really focusing on the environment. When a lot of folks think about enacting policy as far as like, you know, environment-friendly, climate change and everything, we're using our hands and we're putting trees down. So thank you for that.
I always appreciate you getting out there and digging holes.
And I usually do. So we'll continue being there. We'll continue being there. And please, don't ever hesitate to let us know where we can help.
Yeah.
I know that that's what we're here to do, and this is where we're at. I won't read the proclamation because you already went into it.
I'm so sorry. I totally jumped the gun.
Arbor Day, April 26, 2024. It's when the City of Elk Grove is doing this, so.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll come down.
One more.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Please tell Jessica I said hi.
All right.
I can continue doing proclamations like that.
Excellent. Next up is item 4.4, proclamation declaring May as Bike Month. Presenting that will be Councilmember Darren Suen.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Other representatives from the Trails Committee and local bike clubs, come on down. Come on, Mark, I see you down there, Sharon. Come on to the podium, please.
Carl? Yes.
While he's making noise his way down, I'm gonna preface this to say, we know our bike trails aren't perfect yet, but we are working on that, as you know. Appreciate all your involvement and work to help that along, as well as our regional trail network that we're looking for funding for at the federal and state level to help connect us all throughout the six-county region. So whereas May is National Bike Month promoted by the League of American Bicycleists and separated in communities from coast to coast since 1956, a chance to showcase the many benefits of cycling and encourage more people of all ages and abilities to give biking a try. And whereas since 2004, May is Bike Month has been celebrated across the Sacramento region, El Dorado, Placer, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba Counties. And events are planned throughout the month to promote and encourage people to try bicycling for some of their trips. And I'm gonna skip down for a couple for sake of brevity here. Since a recent study found that when individuals replace one car trip per day with a bike trip, that person reduces their carbon emissions from transportation by 67%. Just one small change in your daily life which contributes to a healthier future for our planet and nation. And since using a bike for transportation can help improve personal health and air quality, Elk Grove residents should be encouraged to try an active alternative for transportation such as biking instead of a car. And whereas celebrating May as Bike Month is simple to go for a ride, any ride, whether it's a short trip for coffee or a double sentry, or any way you can choose to ride a bike is the right way to ride a bike. And whereas the month of May is a great time to check with local cycling clubs or our local bicycle shops to find other people with which to ride, with Bike to Work Mileage Madness Week 2024 taking place May 11 through the 19th, and Bike and Roll to School Day on Wednesday, May 8. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council, the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as May is Bike Month in Elk Grove. Accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation of local and regional May as Bike Month activities. Thank you for being here.
Anyone want to say anything? You're welcome to say something, otherwise we'll meet you down there. Anyone?
We're good.
All right. It's good. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
I get another opportunity.
I'll catch you later. I'll catch you later.
I know where you live.
Thank you.
Some of you stay right here.
All right, next up is our Trails Committee Annual Update, presented by Mark Mendenhall. Welcome back to the podium.
Wow, they already got it going for me. That's good. Let me test this out and make sure it's gonna work. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, council members. We've been doing this a long time. And thank you for having me again and appointing me and all that sort of thing. It's been a pleasure. This is our committee today. We're unchanged from last year. Sharon and Chris are with us. Mark was not able to be here, and Sharon now they do. This is what we do. We provide input and direction on CIP and planning projects and a vision for future active transportation in our city. Tonight, I'll touch on some past, present, and some future stuff. Last year, staff organized, and I led, along with members of our community, a staff bike ride to Northern Laguna and into a little bit into South Sacramento. This year, we plan to do a ride south down to the planned zoo and other sites in the southeast policy area. Some of the planned trails are in. There would be plenty of interpretive stops to point out cycling highlights and improvement opportunities. Kaylee Lyons, she's here hiding. Kaylee Lyons is our senior transportation manager and has taken responsibility for our committee and our activities, including this ride. As part of our ride, we'll explore the potential access to the zoo using active transportation. A new eight-foot off-street bikeway is already in place along Lots Parkway. The built-out plan calls for Class 1 off-street trails surrounding the entire zoo property. Staff has been working very hard, planning access to the zoo by active transportation. We'll have plenty of bike racks and separated circulation within the property. Christopher Jordan reviewed the plans at one of our commuting meetings this year. The circulation patterns for the zoo include many bicycle amenities to help us along. Planning staff put together a composite presentation of the overall trails plan for the area south of White Lock and east of Bruceville. The planned area will be well-served with many trails. This is tough to see, I understand, but it's really for staff to remind them of what they need to do. We created our Minor CIP Project Recommendation Log in 2019 to help staff prioritize small projects that have a big impact on trail usability. This is our list. There is no need to read it here. We will complete four projects this spring. These four projects are the initial ones that brought us to the prioritized list. Five years on, they're finally coming. We can make a big difference in the bikeability of our city by moving these projects ahead more quickly. We need a champion to help us along. Each of our project recommendations is accompanied by a write-up featuring maps, aerials, pictures, and the issues of what it might look like when altered. The majority of these items are curb cuts, ramps, and realignments. We, of course, would like to see all of these implemented sooner than later as they will go a long way to make our trails safer and more usable. Here is the new ramp at Sierra River Drive and Rising Creek Way. A cycling challenge became an easy access point to the trail. Here is a new ramp at Ston Brook Drive. It's not quite done yet, a much-needed improvement. Here is the old ramps and the new ramps at Adobe Spring and Bertrand Ways. With improved ramps, painted crosswalk, and flashing lights, these are greatly improved trail crossings. The Sheldon Farms Development located at Sheldon and Bruceville, adjacent to Wincow, has constructed a critical connection for the Laguna Creek Trail and connects the Elk Grove Creek Trail as well. The magenta dotted line, which is hard to see, but it's down at the lower part, is the newly constructed trail section. This is an older aerial. This project is much further along. And here is a completed trail. The Laguna, City of Elk Grove's Laguna Creek Interregional Trail Master Plan, I didn't name that, provides a conceptual multimodal planning foundation for the city of Elk Grove and adjacent communities. This grant-funded project will aid the city in coordinating projects within Elk Grove, City of Sacramento, Sacramento County, and supports Elk Grove goals to improve connectivity throughout the city's network of trails. The plan is moving forward on several fronts. Major trail projects working towards completion of the regional trail include the Laguna Creek Trail, Camden North Spur to East Stockton Boulevard. Design phases underway, including the pedestrian bridge over State Route 99, Camden to West Stockton Boulevard. These are major projects and essential connectors. The connection of what is now the end of Laguna Creek Trail at Waterman Road to the trail beginning at Sierra River Drive is needed to reach all the way to Bradshaw Road. The original plan to have two bridge under crossings and an at-grade crossing has been modified to have only one under crossing and no at-grade crossings. A Class 1 off-street trail would be added to the south side of Bond Road to Sierra River Drive. The trail extension along the south side of Elk Grove Creek from Onito Park to Laguna Springs Drive is planned for construction later this summer. And actually, I believe is going out for bid very soon, if not already. Connectivity and safe trails, we hear it every time we ask. What's needed to make our increase trail use and reduce vehicle trips? We are working every day to fulfill this vision. Our connected network is expanding, and we have our new updated pocket-sized maps to show off our work. This is a picture of the map, and it all folds down to that. Standing in our way is one freeway, 99, and two railroad corridors that are difficult obstacles to get around. Suburban design of the past usually included vehicular mobility, but rarely considered other active transportation alternatives along safe and separated trails. As our ongoing example, we'll look more closely at the Union Pacific Tracks corridor through Eldout Grove. We have two existing Class 1 bike and pedestrian crossings at the red arrows, Laguna Creek Trail undercrossing, Grantland Road overcrossing. We need three more to accomplish trail connectivity through the corridor, Strawberry Creek, White House Creek, Elk Grove Creek. We have planned rail crossings at the yellow arrows. These are not easy fixes, but need to be considered. Last year, I talked about the Elk Grove Creek Trail. This year, it's Strawberry Creek, which has the potential to provide trail access to Monterey Trail High School, Harris Middle School, Calvine Power and Retail Centers. The trailway track is already in place with drainage service roads from Aubrey Drive to the railroad tracks at Calvine. Jones Family Park, which is just off this picture, can be easily connected to that. Here's a close-up of the critical railroad crossing. If we can get over, around, under, across any way we can, then that opens up the entire retail corridor, centers from, including Brown Road, Black Kite, Heritage Shill, Silverberry, and everything else that goes all the way over to the centers where Lowe's are a complete thing. And beyond that, we can safely access the Laguna Creek Trail by going south on residential streets. As part of our ongoing trail improvement efforts, staff is working on a comprehensive wayfinding signage program. Initially, it will focus on our four main trail systems, and will eventually direct walkers and cyclists to points of interest all over the city. Our committee has recommended various iterations of this project over the years. With your help, we're moving forward. With your promise last year to encourage a plan, staff is putting together a task force of involved parties and influencers to get a reasonable framework for e-machines that we can all feel comfortable with. Thank you for that. The anti-trash volunteer team continues to keep our trails, creeks, and roadways clean every Saturday since early 2020. Committee member Sharon Anderson has been very active in organizing and helping each week. We thank all the participants for their tireless work and dedication to keeping our city the best it can be. Grants, federal, state, and regional are leveraged with city matching funds to advance trail priorities. We now have a senior transportation manager to further our cause. Kaylee is doing a great job for the city. Thank you for that. Stuff for all of us to work on, safer bike ways and intersections, keeping our trails open, and safe places for our residents and getting it right the first time. I'm proud to live in and be part of the city that cares about its residents and our facilities, keeping our trails clean and inviting is a priority in Elk Grove. This is Elk Grove Creek along Laguna Boulevard. Thank you, and comments.
All right. Well, thank you. What a great presentation. Yes, absolutely. Any comments or questions? I'm looking to my left. No? Someone go.
I'll just make a note that Laguna Creek, West Stockton Multimodal Trail Improvements is out to bid in our consent package, so thank you for noting that.
Vice Mayor?
No, this is a great report. And just to show the progress of how we've come on developing the system and continuing on work and improving to make the system fully connected is really good information and really good for us to know. And if there's anything I could do to help, you know, get my hands dirty and help clean up, let me know.
Talk to Sharon about that.
Because I need some LBs. I need some LBs to shed over the next few months.
Anyone have questions or comments, my right?
Just very quick, you know, it's, those small projects, you know, you'd highlighted, they make a difference. And if you had the opportunity, or if folks were able to see the difference between that kind of awkward corner getting onto the trail as opposed to that open ramp, it means a lot. It makes it much safer. Trying to make that little corner can make you tumble at times. And so I appreciate you bringing those, the little stuff that you think doesn't make a difference, it makes a huge difference. So thank you very much to you and to the committee.
I'll point out one thing. We've said it many times, in the city of Elk Grove, you look at Sacramento as a city, and their attention that they pay to those small things is like, they don't. And in Elk Grove, you know, even though it takes forever to get this stuff done, we still pay attention to it, and you know, we have a list. I don't, I can't say enough about how careful we are about doing those kinds of things. It's very nice.
Thank you for your commitment. I've actually ran the Sheldon Farms Trails, and that's a really nice trail, which is leading all the way down to Bruceville and everything. So I appreciate that. I know that some of the running groups that I've ran with appreciate it because we started off by Kaiser. We have to watch our ankles so that we don't roll it. But then when we get to Sheldon Farms, we know that it's gonna be a nice.
Yeah, it's those sharp curves that get us, you know?
So thank you for the hard work.
Thank you for this fabulous presentation. And I also want to thank all of the committee members that are part of this great work that, again, improves the quality of life here in Elk Grove. So thank you all for your continued support and commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, item 4.6, new hire introductions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Verba, City Manager. I always enjoy introducing our new city employees that have been hired the last quarter, as well as those that have been promoted. So we're gonna go ahead and start with our police department, Chief Davis.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, I am honored to be here. I'm Bobby Davis, the Chief of Police for the city of Elk Grove and the Elk Grove Police Department. Before I start, though, I do want to acknowledge it's Administrative Professionals Day, and I wouldn't have this here today if we hadn't called Stacy Ferris and had it done and had Gabrielle Lang send it. Yeah, and Gabby sent it to me because I forgot it. So I want to thank them and recognize them as well. In addition to that, we have a lot of people that we are gonna be recognizing today, and our human resources helped us significantly hire these folks. And our PSB, Lieutenant Vina and his team have done a wonderful job in helping us fill the vacancies in this organization. So I want to acknowledge them as well. So to start, where are we at? Oh, look at that. How awesome is that? Records technician Renee Richardson, January 2, 2024. Renee was born in Visalia, California, and moved to Elk Grove where she attended Franklin High School and CSU. Part of joining Elk Grove PD, she worked in applied behavior analysis. Hi, how are you? For children with special needs for approximately two years. While away from work, Renee enjoys, sorry about that, writing ghost hunting and playing games. She had her first thriller novel published last October. So welcome to this organization. Come on up. CSO Ryan Sheldon. January 22, 2024, Ryan was born and raised in Honolulu, Hawaii. He has 24 years of military service in human resources and public affairs. He currently serves in California National Army Guard as a mass communication specialist. While away from work, right, shout out, Ryan enjoys video games, working out, trying new food places, and going to Hawaiian beaches. And don't we all? Mental health clinician, oh, Stephanie Schilling's not here. Hang on just a sec. Stephanie is not here. Mental health clinician Stephanie Schilling, January 15, 2024. Stephanie was born and raised in Carmel Valley. She earned her bachelor's degree from Alfred University in Western New York. Part of joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Stephanie was a CIT counselor with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office for over four years and has been working in the psychology field for over 12. While away from work, she enjoys spending her time around the barn and taking care of her horse, Murphy. And Brian's not here either. One more. Dispatcher Brian Hausman. February 12, 2024, Brian was born and raised in Vacaville. Part of joining the Elk Grove Police Department, he spent the past 20 years working in various restaurants in the Sacramento region. While away from work, Brian enjoys working on his 1968 Mercury Cougar and golfing. CSO Madison Mills. Part of a legacy in this organization. Her father is motor officer for the Elk Grove Police Department. Madison was born and raised in Woodland. She earned her bachelor's degree in criminal justice from CSU Sacramento prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department. Madison worked for the Woodland Joint Unified School District as a health tech at the elementary schools. While away from work, she enjoys going to the gym, Dutch Bros, hiking, and hanging out with family and friends. Welcome to our department. Oh, just a sec. Sorry. Sorry, Josh. Dispatcher Janelle Nolan. February 26, 2024, Janelle grew up in Scotts Valley, in the Santa Cruz region. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, she worked for the Elk Grove Unified School District for about two and a half years. While away from work, Janelle enjoys going to church, spending time with her family, traveling, and working on her foodie adventures. CSO Joshua Tejada. Joshua was born and raised in Sacramento and graduated from Pleasant Grove High School prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department. He worked for McDonald's for about three years as a restaurant and preventative maintenance. In 2021, Joshua joined the United States Marine Corps and currently serves in the U.S. Marine Corps Reserves. While away from work, he enjoys going kayaking, camping with his family. And a fun fact, Joshua also served as one of our explorers. Congratulations. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Nalia Jackson, Officer Jackson. Nalia was also one of our CSOs. Proud of you. Nalia joined the Elk Grove Police Department on June 21, 2020. She graduated the academy on March 18 and is currently in a field training program. Phil, that's mine. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ernesto, come on up. Officer Ernesto Martinez, promoted on March 19, 2024. Ernesto was born in Pueblo, Mexico, and raised in East Los Angeles. He enlisted in the Marine Corps in March of 2002. During his 20 years of military service, he was a training instructor, advisor, reached the rank of First Sergeant. Ernesto joined the Elk Grove Police Department on July 31 in 2023. 2023, in which his first day in the academy, they called me and said, this guy is a stud. Yes. He graduated the academy on March 18 and is currently in the field training program. Welcome to the department. Officer Katie Enright-Gera. Katie was born and raised in Lodi. She worked as an X-ray tech at an urgent care clinic. Katie joined Elk Grove Police Department on August 14, 2023. She graduated the academy on March 18 and is currently in the field training program. Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. Captain Brian Shaw. Brian joined Elk Grove Police Department on May 4, 2006. Prior to his promotion, he served as the Employee Relations, Employee Resources and Wellness Lieutenant, and he currently oversees the investigative division. Brian has been pivotal in the last year, specifically working on law enforcement wellness, and not just for our organization but across the region. And he is really known as an expert in addressing some of those needs and has helped our organization flourish. And so, I want to say thank you. Thank you so very much. Terry Cooley. Lieutenant Terry Cooley promoted on March 24, 2024. Terry joined the Elk Grove Police Department on July 13, 2008. Prior to his promotion, he served as a Training Sergeant for professional standards. Currently, he is a Watch Commander on the B-Side Day Shift Patrol in our Operations Division. Thank you for being here. Come on up, Raj. Sergeant Raj Deguman. Raj joined the Elk Grove Police Department on March 27, 2011. Prior to his promotion, he served as a detective in our Property and Financial Crimes Unit. Currently, he supervises the B-Side Swing Shift Patrol, and he is also a veteran or currently in the military services. Thank you so much. Marine. That's all we have for you. Thank you.
I just, I know we'll probably wait till the end, but I just want to say, I am just shocked and surprised. And thank you for the work that you've done on hiring veterans. I'm super proud of the hires that we've done. And I know Councilman Spies is probably going to beat him to the punch. I'm super proud of what we're doing as a city. We're leading this in the region, and I hope that we continue to lead this in the region. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We take great pride in the men and women who serve this organization, or serve not just our organization but our country. And it's something that our recruiting teams, our human resources, our city takes great pride in. And as you can see through many of our ranks, our military people help make up a significant portion of this organization, and will continue to do so. So, thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Next group.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Darren Wilson, your Development Services Director. I'm pleased to introduce David Benton Court, who was hired by the city on January 29 of this year as our Second Homeless Services Navigator. So, David has lived in Elk Grove for the past 35 years. He can trace his heritage back to cattle ranchers in Elk Grove area, at least as far back as 1904. He and his wife have raised their children right here in Elk Grove. Prior to working for the city, David worked as a mental health case manager for adults and children with severe mental illness for the past 23 years. And let me tell you, that experience is a major asset to have when assisting our homeless population. So, his wife is a marriage and family therapist who specializes in severe mental illness. I'd like to be at that dinner table.
It's interesting.
David has coached sports on just about every field that is in Elk Grove, including 12 seasons with our CSD Sports Program. Please join me in welcoming David to our Elk Grove family.
Nicole Guttridge is off today, so I'm filling in for her. Want to introduce Arnold Mendoza. Arnold? Arnold joined the City of Elk Grove's Information Services Department in March of this year as an IT analyst. Arnold is originally from Chicago, raised in San Jose. He embarked on his IT journey with the Santa Clara County, worked there for nine years, and then Alameda County for seven years. Arnold was looking for a more nurturing environment that is tight-knit, more family-focused, alongside his wife and four children. He certainly found it here in Elk Grove. So, welcome, Arnold. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Warner, you're a proud Director of Public Works. First introduction this evening is Ron Root. Ron's our newest facilities technician who started in January. Prior to joining the City of Elk Grove, Ron worked at R.C. Willie as the Facility Maintenance Supervisor. Ron graduated from Sheldon High School and was born and raised in Sacramento. When he's away from work, Ron enjoys spending time with his family and following his favorite baseball team, the San Francisco Giants. In fact, he proposed to his wife at Oracle Park during a sold-out Giants game and had it televised on the Jumbotron. So, two loves of his life, apparently. Ron has made a great addition to the facilities team, and we're very happy to have him. Congratulations. Next up, we have Mateo Garcia Villa. Mateo is a landscape technician, and his primary responsibilities include taking care of the landscape and irrigation out at District 56, so the entire campus out there. We're very happy to have him. Doing that, he started with us as well in January. He's worked in the landscaping industry for over 10 years, most recently as an irrigation technician for the City of Rockland. Mateo has lots of experience with irrigation and is, again, going to serve him well in his maintenance of District 56. And he enjoys playing soccer, watching sports, loves cars, and hanging out with his three kids. Welcome, Mateo.
Thank you.
And then not with us this evening is Jason Hayes, our newest traffic signal and streetlight maintenance technician. Although you may have seen Jason, he's been working in and around the City of Elk Grove for about 20 years. So, he has a ton of experience in this, and we're very lucky to have him. He also joined us in January. He's an avid golfer and is an eight handicap. So, if you're looking for a member to add your foursome, you can give him a call.
Thank you.
All right. Well, how about a round of applause for all of our new hires and promotions? You picked a great city. For those new hires, welcome to Elk Grove. This is a great place. So, we are so pleased that you joined our family. Thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is public comment. We have two people signed up to speak. We've got Keith Diedrich and Lynn Wheat.
Keith Diedrich, President and CEO of the Gathering Inn. I think I'm going to see you Sunday, maybe, down at the shelter. What a great thing that I've been to so many council meetings in my lifetime all across the country, and I don't think I've ever seen that, like new hires being acknowledged like that. So, you really do have a really good city. I wanted to come up and just thank the council for your courageous decision many, many months ago to start the winner-only sanctuary. I don't know if you guys saw the article, but there's a bunch of articles about homelessness recently, $25 billion spent in California, can't account for the money, don't know what happened to the people. And Elk Grove's different than that. It's way different than that. In fact, the money that we received for a five-month contract, we were able to extend it for an additional month and not ask for any more money from the City of Elk Grove. I don't know how often that ever happens, but it happened here. And then also, I'm going to read you, I typically don't read, but I'm going to read you the 21 people. Because sometimes you guys make policy decisions, and then the decision gets made, and then, ah, I wonder whatever happened to that. But I'm going to tell you what happened to your decision because you hired, your program enabled 21 people that were experiencing chronic homelessness in the City of Elk Grove, and you changed their lives. And not only did you change their lives, we have a chance to change it intergenerationally, right? Because those folks typically have children as well. So, hats off to you guys. So, I'm going to read Remagio, Josh G., Brenda, Tim, Alan, Luke, Stanley, Brea, Tina, Danny, Elijah, Cassidy, Chad, Thomas, Josh Y., Abalina, Kimberly, Carlos, Ridge, Stephen, and Brandy. 21 people out of the 50 people that left the program. That's 41%. And that's folks, chronically homeless people. I mean, we're not talking, these folks have had a lot of challenges in their life. And we were able to do that at the Gathering Inn, but we couldn't have done that without your decision to start the program to begin with. So, hopefully, I know it's winding down right now, but hopefully we can start it up again soon. But I just wanted to come and just publicly thank this council. And then also the staff. Jason, your staff has been really good to work with. And like I said, there's really no place like Elk Grove, so you guys are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that. That's remarkable statistics. Lynn Wheat. And that is our final speaker for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, I think the people of Elk Grove are really wonderful. And it touches my heart to hear that we've been able to move so many into permanent housing. And I just want to thank Sarah Bonekraeger for all the work that she does in trying to make this possible for those that have the smallest voice within our, that I see having the smallest voice within our community. But what I want to talk to you about tonight is the Zoom meeting over the finances for the zoo. And I, recognizing having participated for the entire time we've been a city, how politics plays out. So, I imagine that it is already a done deal and probably a 5-0 vote. But as part of democracy, I still get my three minutes. So, I'm taking them now. I appreciate the efforts on trying to discuss the finances, which can be a tough situation. I would have appreciated it much more if it wasn't in a Zoom format, so that I could have talked to some of the other people within the community either before the meeting or following the meeting. But I appreciate that your efforts to do Zoom was to try to get more to participate. Because definitely, when the EIR came out and the meeting was held in the chambers, very few of our 178,000 residents attended that meeting. But there were a couple of questions that weren't really responded to, and it's like deja vu for me. I remember when we put the overpass in, the taxpayers paid for it so we could get the mall, the dead mall. And the night of the hearing, I just asked, I said, I understand that some things have to be very private, but I haven't heard of one signed contract with General Growth with one of the shopping, you know, Macy's or Target or whoever's coming. I haven't heard that. Well, we saw how that panned out, and we footed the bill for that overpass. Fortunately, we've been able to use it. What I'm not hearing about is how much money has the Sacramento Zoological Society really raised, and how are they going to cover the cost on a year-to-year basis? And what happens if they're not able to, and we taxpayers are holding on to that bond? It just feels like deja vu to me. I could talk about the millions of dollars we spent on supposedly the soccer going to come, and that didn't happen. So, we have these big dreams, but it's our taxpayer money. And thank God, I don't live in Laguna Ridge or Poppy Ridge, whose CFDs are going to be helping to fund this. I am sorry to hear that some of Measure A monies are going to spread out sprawl, which causes our urban areas, our inner areas of our supposed city to decline more, and we just look at decaying roads. That money should have been used for existing roadways, not spent on moving us out. We already paid for the infrastructure out to, we footed the bill for the infrastructure out to SEPA with future reimbursements. That was to bring jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lynn Wheat was our final public comment speaker. So, we will close public comment and move on to our next item, which is our City Managers' Report.
All right. Good evening again. Several items to cover tonight. First, just a shout-out recognition of our SWAC, our Special Waste Collection Center, as we celebrated 10 years this week. And so, really proud of the role that plays in our community in diverting hazardous materials from our landfills and down our drains. Want to let you know that we've installed a new creek monitoring system. Springtime snow melt will soon descend on local creeks, and waterways in Elk Grove's public works staff have added a new online tool to monitor our local creeks. A new creek monitoring system will report real-time data on water levels from six locations throughout the city. The tool will be especially helpful to track next winter's flood conditions, but the public can access the information at any time on the city's website. A reminder, the sample water fitness classes are available at the Elk Grove Aquatic Center for free this Sunday, April 28. Participants can try out classes like deep water aerobics, aqua jogging, aqua spin, and stretch. Pre-registration is required at kasumna-csd.gov. The city and its youth commission support local students pursuing higher education. Students in grades nine through 12 can apply to receive one of four $500 to $1,000 scholarships. Applications can be found online on the city's website. Students must live or attend high school within the Elk Grove city limits. Deadline for the applications is Friday, May 3. Fridays in the Grove is back. We're bringing back one of the crowd favorites, which was Country in the Plaza from last year. It will be at Old Town Plaza next Friday, May 3, from 5 to 8 p.m. It will be free line dance lessons, live music from Gunpowder and Lace, and more details are available on the city's website. And finally, we want to announce an upcoming concert that's coming up at District 56 that's being sponsored by our Arts Commission. It's going to be a blues concert on Sunday, July 21, from noon to 6:30 p.m. Tickets just went on sale. It's an indoor show featuring Mick Martin Blues Band, Zydeco Flames, Annie Sampson, and Bob Jones and the Chosen Few. General Mission seating is $40 per person. Details are available on our website. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Thank you for the report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I want to thank you for putting out the signal flare for the Blues in the Grove Ticket Sales Event, working with the Art Commission on some things on that. And I'm glad to see that the word is out and that people are able to get tickets for this fun show. I know it's going to be in July, but the sooner you get your tickets, the more fun you will have, believe me. And then for the Special Waste Center, I definitely thank you for the notice of the 10 years. There's something I want to work on with you offline, because there's, I know there's some people that like to recycle their liquids, their transmission fluids, their oils, and they don't have containers. And so, I'm trying to figure out, is there something we could do to help those individuals out? Because some folks don't have milk containers or whatever is needed. And I know that that was something that we did years ago, but it was like for a temporary basis. And so, just seeing if there's something we could do on an on-demand basis.
Yeah, we do have programs that are available. Jeff will follow up with our Recycling and Waste Manager and get that information to you. We'll make sure it's available. I know it's on our website as well, but we'll get you all the specifics.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions, we'll go on to our next item, our Consent Calendar. At this time, I will go ahead and open up public comment opportunity. And Lynn Wheat has signed up to speak on item 7.4. Ms. Wheat?
So, I decided to go through this again, long list of payouts. One concern that I have is that we continue to have to pay attorneys quite a bit of money. I'm hoping you've hired another attorney that we won't have to be paying so much. We gave Best Best and Craig another $3,000. That's on page 53, if you're interested in looking. On page 48, we gave Chronic at All another $22,000 plus. Just goes on and on. Then there's some of interest that I'm just not sure about, but curious. We paid Water Resource Investigations $2,300. And then we paid a Traffic Detective Supplies, Traffic Detective Supplies for $138, and that's on page 29. And then, of course, we're really working on this zoo. So, we paid, we had a financial modeling that we paid them $2,167. That's on page 35, if you're interested. And then, let's see, should I go through a few more? I would encourage you to continue to go through and explore where some of our tax dollars are going. and explore where some of our tax dollars are going. But like I said, what concerned me the most is how we continue to put more out in legal fees. And then, of course, we do have a well-educated staff here within the city, because there's a number of travel expenses, too. And I do believe that we should have some in services and training for our staff. But as you go through and approve this taxpayer money being spent, I would encourage you to look at how some of the monies are dispersed. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Seeing no further speakers, I will close public comment and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, eight point one.
And that is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section twenty-three point nine, four point oh five oh, relative to wireless facility utility separation requirements.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Christopher Jordan will be presenting this item for you this evening. As Jason mentioned, we're proposing a series of amendments, right? Excuse me, an amendment to our municipal codes proposed, which would deal with the separation requirements for wireless telecommunications facilities. These would be from utility lines, principal utility, power utility lines. Existing municipal code, which is up on the screen, has a provision that says that new wireless telecommunications facilities must be located minimum of ten feet horizontally from existing power lines unless the antenna is installed to be integral as part of a utility tower or facility. Little confusing to follow. I totally understand. And so we have a couple of pictures that'll help explain this better. When the code was first written back in two thousand and six, this is what we thought of in terms of as cellular facilities, right? These are the large arrays that you would see either on a monopole or a monopoint style facility or that would be integrated, in this particular case, to a power line corridor, to big apparatus like a big SMUD transmission line facilities, those sorts of things. And so when they're on a facility like this, they're coordinated with the utility provider. They know what's going on. And being able to work within their system is really easy or fairly straightforward. So we have these macro facilities that would go up there. Since then, though, the technology has changed quite a bit. And now we have these small cell deployments around town. You can actually see these, this photo is from out here along Laguna Springs Drive, just about a block or so here from City Hall. And so these facilities, thinking about them, are much different than what we thought of back in two thousand and six when we drafted the code. And then there's a couple of corridors around the city. Here is an example from Elk Grove Boulevard over on the west side by Nugget Market, where the existing streetlight poles are directly underneath or really almost integrated in with those existing power lines and other telecom lines. And so when we look at the application of the code as it exists today, it creates this, what you can imagine is sort of an exclusion zone that is ten feet on either side of the power lines and runs from the lines themselves all the way there onto the ground. And it's essentially infinity up into the sky around those. And so that prohibits us under the current code from then allowing those small cell deployments to occur on our streetlight infrastructure, which is previous direction you've given us, and to then work through that. And so we have this compliance issue. So staff has been working with the developer. In this case, it is Crown Castle, who is doing these deployments in this particular case. And they've been working with us and with SMUD to identify how can we move these facilities forward. And so the proposal before you this evening is to modify the existing code to strike the word horizontal. And instead, that will create essentially an exclusion zone that is then a radius around those lines, as you can see here in this graphic. And so that would then allow, in this particular case, for that small cell deployment to go on to the streetlight pole below it and not have to worry about that exclusion around the line because it is substantially higher than ten feet above it. Staff, both from planning and from public works, has been involved in this and staff is supportive of it. We've also been coordinating with SMUD, and they have no concerns. And their correspondence around that is included in the packet. And the revisions tonight are exempt from the state CEQA guidelines and from CEQA per the guidelines. So recommendation from staff and from the Planning Commission are to recommend the amendments as presented. We're available for questions if you have them. And the applicant is here this evening.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up for this. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments from colleagues? I'll start to the left.
No comments. I'll move staff's recommendation.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next up, item eight point two.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm VJ McSear, financialist for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure or services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development projects approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex a project's parcel as shown on the screen, Beta Singh Parcel Map, into special tax districts and established tonight's public hearing. The project is being proposed to be annexed into the following special tax districts. CFD two thousand and three dash two, Police Services. CFD two thousand and six dash one, Maintenance Services. Street Maintenance District Number One, Zone Three, Street Maintenance. Stormwater Drainage Free, Zone Two, Stormwater Drainage and Maintenance. This is the seventy-third annexation into CFD two thousand and three dash two, the ninety-fifth annexation to CFD two thousand and six dash one, the fifty-second annexation into Street Maintenance District Zone Three, and the sixty-fifth annexation into Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone Two. This assessment will be levied in perpetuity. The project is Beta Singh Parcel Map, which is, which consists of four single-family residential units located northeast of Sheldon Road and Ratchell Road. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. At this time, I will declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero three dash two, Annex Seventy-three, open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero three dash two, Annex Seventy-three is closed. And look for motion one.
Motion A one.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of four possible votes, four affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate of portion and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration. And this is our new iteration in two thousand and twenty-four. You can also motion the ordinance that enacts this as well as one motion, so.
Motion A two and A three.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Let's see. The second public hearing. I will declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex Ninety-five is open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex Ninety-six is now closed. And look for motion B one.
Motion B one. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
And again, of four possible votes, four affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate of portion and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right. Movements B two and B three.
Movements B two and B three.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our third public hearing, SMD three dash AO Annex Fifty-two. I will declare the public hearing for SMD three dash A O, Annex Fifty-two is open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SMD three dash AO Annex Fifty-two is now closed and request the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of four possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the properties, four affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion C.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Our fourth public hearing, SWDF Zone Two, Annex Sixty-five. I would like to declare the public hearing for that open. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex Sixty-five is closed. And look for the results of the ballot tabulation.
And on our fourth and final tonight, there is no majority protest. Of four possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, four affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion D.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, nine point one.
An item nine point one is considered an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point oh six, fireworks violations relating to dangerous fireworks enforcement and a resolution for enacting fees along with that.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Ryan Huber, your senior code enforcement officer. At the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four council, city council meeting, the council heard staff's recommendations to enhance the city's enforcement to deter the use of dangerous fireworks. The city council accepted the recommendations and directed staff to return with a code amendment to Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point oh six, Dangerous Fireworks, and also a resolution to increase the fines for violations of Chapter seventeen point oh six to $1,000 per violation. So the proposed amendment does three things. It, first, it adds a section to establish a, to establish a violation of Chapter seventeen point oh six as a misdemeanor. And this allows for a thousand dollar fines. The second is that it adds a section for host liability related to dangerous fireworks violations from private properties. It also defines the term host for clarification of responsible persons and/or entities of private properties. The proposed resolution with this item will update the schedule of administrative fines to establish violations of Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point oh six, at $1,000 per violation. Each single dangerous firework will be considered a separate violation. As an example, under the proposed resolution, if a person is observed using an aerial firework and then is found in possession of two more aerial fireworks, an administrative citation could be issued for three violations at $1,000 each. The total fine for that citation would be $3,000. The use of dangerous fireworks continues to be a fire hazard to property and a danger to the life and safety of our citizens. With the intent of deterring the use of dangerous fireworks, staff recommends council adopt the code amendment to Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point oh six, and the resolution to update the schedule of administrative fines. I'm open for any questions. I also have Lieutenant Jared Perez from the Elk Grove Police Department and Deputy Fire Marshal Brian Schell here to answer any questions on their behalf.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. I will open up the public comment opportunity. We have one person signed up, Commissioner Juan Fernandez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I hadn't planned to speak this evening. But having been a former pyrotechnics operator, I wanted to applaud the amendment to the code for fireworks. I was one of the first crews to do public events fireworks display on Lake Tahoe, where we actively mitigated the fallout from the fireworks. And if you're not aware, there's an element of cardboard that falls from the lift charge on a firework. And those often contain heavy metals, magnesium, all the pretty colors that you see in the sky, titanium, and all those different elements give us the different color of firework. And those were falling into Lake Tahoe. And so I was one of the first crews to actually do mitigation of that going into the lake. So I applaud the intent to try to limit those hazardous materials, but also the noise element. And so I might suggest that you arm code enforcement with a mechanism, some technology, for both code enforcement to be able to measure the decibels, the sound of that nuisance noise of fireworks, because that's what often people complain about with respect to the fireworks. It startles their animals. And so perhaps if there was an augmentation to the See Click Fix app for being able to capture that firework when it's happening and the sound, because the sensitive receptors for people with respect to that noise is as much of a concern as the fire potential of a falling firework that's still smoldering, as well as the heavy metals and the material in the lift charges and the firework itself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That is our final speaker. So I will close the public comment opportunity. And any questions or comments? I'll start to the left here. Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just glad to see this, this increase with any hope or luck this summer will be a little more tame. I would like to ask about Mr. Fernandez's comments about our app. Is, is that possible to measure decibels or do we, is that a tool that code enforcement could find useful?
I'm not familiar enough with the See Click Fix app to see if that would even be possible, but we could certainly get together with, with, I believe it was Kerry White, Kerry Whitelock who, I'm sorry, not Kerry Whitelock, Kerry Monte, who could maybe help assist with that and see if that's an opportunity or option.
Yeah, okay, yeah. If it, if it worked for you, I'm happy to support that for myself, so, but thank you. Other than that, I'm happy to move staff's recommendation as well on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, questions, comments?
Yes, I definitely appreciate the presentation by Mr. Huber, but also the collaboration that took place in February a couple of months ago as we were trying to look for ways to help curb the proliferation, the further proliferation of the illegal fireworks. And so it feels like we have hit a good, a good spot, a good start. But I also appreciate Mr. Fernandez's recommendation on the noise part because for, for pets who, that are very sensitive to the noise, but also for, for, for people who have PTSD. Because as the, as the, as the, the noise goes off, whether, no matter how close or far those illegal fireworks go off and as we're seeing more recently, this is something that was hard, hard for us to contain or control are these people that are using the M-80 bottle rockets or fireworks that sets off those loud booms that really startles and catches people off guard. If there's, if there's some sort of way to where we can capture something like that on See Click Fix, because I know we have the ability to capture images and put them on, and use them to help back up our, our complaints. But if there's an extra way to aid into that, I think that can go a long ways on the other side of the fence as well to help make sure that we're doing our part to maintain some degree of safety and everything that is within the control of code enforcement and PD to help mitigate against that. So that's my recommendation. But, but other than that, I think things are, yeah, no, I like where we're heading with this, especially with this resolution and when the time is right, I like to second that motion.
Okay, I'll take that as the time is right now, but we'll continue on our questions and comments. But for clarifying purposes, what we're discussing now, just for the record, is the violations that we can measure and see.
Yeah.
And so this is sort of augmented for future consideration and augmentation to see what other data we can capture and ideally noise. I would support that, but I'm not sure how that, what that looks like. So obviously would need more information. Sounds great, but how do we practically do that? So I'd be very interested to see if that's even possible to capture because what's considered loud for one may not be for somebody else. Having that objectively identified, I, I don't know the answer to this, but I would certainly entertain a review over it. I think that that's to our planning commissioner and my colleagues. I would be interested in seeing that explored, but for, for now, this is what we're deciding.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, continuing, continuing on, councilmember Spies.
I'm supportive. Thank you very much for bringing it. I would ask that as we get closer to July fourth and before people start buying those fireworks, that we make sure we do some sort of advertisement about the increased fines. So hopefully people will think twice before they, before they go buy those expensive fireworks. So if we could have some public outreach on it, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
If I may respond to that, we actually already, I've already started to work with media relations on that and we actually, one of the things you also directed us to do was to increase the ability for people to turn in fireworks. I've been working with Fire Marshal Schell and it looks like we're looking at basically Saturday, the twenty-second or Saturday, the twenty-ninth for an amnesty turned in over at Fire Station Seventy-One. Those, the dates that we're kind of looking at, so that, that is in motion and in play.
Perfect, thanks. Just hopefully folks will realize that it's going to be more expensive for violations this year and hopefully that'll deter them, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Robles.
Couldn't have said it any better. Thank you, Councilman Spies, and thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you. Excellent work. We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And there's a motion two.
The motion, yeah, we have a little bit of a convenience now that the ordinances with our new twenty twenty-four, we can move those both with that motion that was just...
For the record, it was for one and two.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next item, please, nine point two.
That'll be to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of intent with Center Cal Acquisitions LLC for Project Elevate.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Darrell Doan, your Economic Development Director. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. The item in front of you is to receive an update on Project Elevate and to consider approving a letter of intent with Center Cal Acquisitions LLC. So as you recall, Project Elevate, it's a little bit of history. I know you know this, but some members of the public may not. Project Elevate is a proposed commercial development project. It would take place on, in approximately twenty acre city-owned parcel. That is the northern portion of what we used to call Civic Center, so this is the parcel just north of what we now call District Fifty-Six. The vision for Project Elevate, it is a vertically integrated mixed-use urban district with highly amenitized public spaces. It would consist of elevated dining, shopping, entertainment, residential and hospitality components. This is an effort to bring an urban mixed-use project, a little piece of midtown, if you will, to Elk Grove. This project was conceived and initiated by the city and the process by which we did that was quite innovative and unique in that the city identified this property as the site, created its own vision for the project and then took that to market through a request for qualifications process to bring in a developer. Often, we put out an RFP and developers tell us what they think works. In this case, we had a vision that we wanted to implement, so that's what's unique about it. Most cities don't do it that way. Little bit, a little bit more history. So the property was obtained in two thousand and four as part of a seventy-six acre piece of property that we obtained through the approvals of the Laguna Ridge specific plan. So the south fifty-six acres is now District Fifty-Six, the north twenty acres is now Project Elevate. In late twenty sixteen, staff started, started talking, we started talking to certain council members and certain developers about what to do with that property and the original concept was to develop a lifestyle shopping center on that site, so similar to the fountains or Palladio. We explored that concept with a series of local developers. We also looked at various hotel concepts, but by early twenty nineteen, the concept had evolved into a mixed-use urban district. In February twenty nineteen, we discussed that concept with the city council at its retreat, at its retreat, and city council directed staff to continue work on the project. In mid twenty nineteen, we put together our own team. We hired an architect, we hired a landscape engineer or landscape architect, a civil engineer, a market analysis team and a financial analysis team to come up with a concept vision and market analysis for Project Elevate. And then in August of twenty twenty, the concept designs and analysis that we came up with were presented to the city council. The council endorsed that vision and directed staff to pursue development as and when possible, given the uncertainties of the pandemic at that time. You also declared the property surplus, which is an important step. That process is now completed, meaning we can sell it for private development purposes. That surplus process triggered a fifteen percent affordable housing component on the project at approximately sixty percent of area median income, so the project will have affordable housing. So Project Elevate, the concept vision is, is what I mentioned, a dynamic, vertically-integrated mixed-use dense urban neighborhood. This is what that concept looked like in twenty nineteen. So this is the work that our architect and consultant team put together. So you can see it's, it is that mixed-use dense urban walkable project, four, five-story building, structured parking, a mix of uses including retail, apartments, hotel and office So in twenty twenty-one, with that vision in place, we engaged a consultant of our, another consultant called Turtin Commercial Real Estate to assist us with finding a development partner. Ken Turtin is here in the audience tonight. If you have questions of him, they've been a great partner of ours through this process. In January of twenty twenty-two, working with Turtin, the city released an offering memorandum. So this is essentially a request for qualifications, allowing developers to put proposals in front of us, seeking to implement the city's vision. From that process, that offering memorandum in April of twenty twenty-two, we received four proposals. And in August of twenty twenty-two, the council approved an exclusive negotiation agreement with the best of those four proposals, which was a firm, a large national firm called Heinz with offices here in Sacramento. So as, as sometimes happens in economic development, it didn't work out with Heinz. Despite everybody's best efforts, including theirs, including staff's. So from September twenty twenty-two to April twenty twenty-three, Heinz conducted a conceptual design, design and planning analysis to see if what they proposed could actually be built. So they determined that they were not able to move forward with the project after going through that exclusive negotiation agreement process with us. And so in May of twenty twenty-three, Heinz advised the city that it could not proceed and they terminated the ENA. So that left us in a position of having to go back out to the marketplace and find a replacement developer, not something we like to do, but again, something that does happen. So in May of twenty twenty-three, partnering with Turtin again, the city released a revised offering memorandum. And between May and October of twenty twenty-three, we received a reaffirmation from two of our original proposers of their continued interest in the project, so that's good, and we received two new proposals as a result. So now, after two memory, offering memorandum processes, we were left with six total proposals. And so what we did with those two new proposals and two original proposals is we worked with our relatively newly formed Project Elevate ad hoc subcommittee of the city council consisting of Messrs. Sun and Robles, and we reviewed those proposals very closely. We conducted interviews with the development firms, we asked a series of supplemental questions and we conducted site visits with the most favored firms. And I want to thank Mr. Sun and Robles for all your time and effort. You guys put a lot into this and as staff, we appreciate it. We appreciate your partnership and your expertise always. So as a result of that entire process spanning, you know, some five years now, we have come to the conclusion and recommend to council tonight that we move forward with a new development firm called Center Cal. And Center Cal is here tonight to talk to you in a few minutes, if you will allow them. We are recommending Center Cal based on the strength of their proposal, which you will see, their commitment to the project, they were unequivocal that this is their top priority and that no other projects stand in front of it, their track record of developing similar mixed-use urban neighborhoods, their strong financial relationships, their equally strong retail relationships, and just as important is their strong operational and management expertise. And so I'm going to step away and I'm going to let Center Cal come out and talk to you. We have Mr. Scott Borer, who is the Vice President of Development for the Pacific Northwest and the whole Bay Area, and he's going to walk you through who they are, what they do and what they're proposing for our site.
Good to see you, Scott.
Howdy, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, welcome back, fellow council members, staff and community members that have stuck around this late. Thank you very much for, for being with us. I'm especially grateful to be here tonight because even hearing Commissioner Murphy's story, getting to hear about what some of the community groups here in Elk Grove are accomplishing in the community, and I have to echo the sentiment from earlier that seeing a city that honors each and every new hire. I've been doing development for twelve years. I've operated in a lot of cities and never have I seen a city that takes it to that level. And while I'm just scratching the surface on getting to know everyone out here, there's something consistent that I've felt in every interaction with, with council, with community members and with staff, and that's a sense of pride in this community, a sense of incredible civic engagement and getting involved in what's happening around you guys, and a real passion and excitement for the future of Elk Grove. And it's really special. So again, I'm really grateful to be here and be a part of that and, and get to present to you tonight. A little bit about our company, and if I didn't introduce myself to everyone formally, my name is Scott Borer. Again, I'm a Vice President of Development for Center Cal Properties. We're a company that's been around for twenty years in the business, though our founders in our company have much more experience than just that. We've been, we're based in Southern California, though I've been up here in Northern California for, for about twelve years. We're operating under the leadership of our CEO, John Paul Wardy, who has really been a visionary in this business and has been a great mentor to me and our, our team of almost a hundred and fifty people, which is very large for a company. Usually, real estate companies are lean and mean, but we operate our company down to the person cleaning up on, on the site, and that's something that's really special about what we do is it's a family. And even despite our scale, it's a family-owned business. That's what it feels like. We're privately held and we have a deep passion from the top to the bottom for what we do. We're also guided by a series of core values that we feel like emanates through every one of our projects and a few of you have had the pleasure of being on site with some of us for those products. But what we're really most proud of is that over twenty years, we've developed eight million square feet of shopping centers and mixed-use projects. That's over twenty projects and during that same time, we've built a reputation. We built a reputation for delivering properties that are unique, that are relevant to the communities that they serve and that really become, in almost every case, the heart of that community, a place of civic pride and a place where, where people get to come and spend their days and celebrate life's moments. The, you know, when I was first approached by Councilmember Sun, he asked if I was familiar with Elk Grove, which I said, yeah, I am. You know, I've got a good friend that operates a business, a restaurant out here, has for about a decade. He said, okay. So, you know, I've worked in Sacramento in my career quite a bit and throughout the Central Valley, Lodi, all the way down to Tulare. And he said, okay, when was the last time you were in Elk Grove? And I very quickly said, it's probably been five years. He said, well, then you don't know Elk Grove. And so over the past almost year now, it's, I've had the pleasure of working with Councilmember Sun and Councilmember Robles, Jason and Darrell on city staff and, and Chris and the rest of council and getting to know the community and seeing what's been happening here, seeing your priorities as a community and getting to really understand the vision for what is Project Elevate. And it's, it's really clear that you guys have worked hard to, to be leaders and championing what should be the heart of this community, the downtown, a place where people come for daily needs, for weekend activities and to celebrate life's biggest moments as a community. And so with that, I'm really, really honored to be here to present our project to you tonight. Let's see if I can operate some technology. So here are a few images of some of the projects that we've built. This is Totem Lake in the Seattle MSA. This is Second and PCH down in Long Beach, California. Then the reoccurring theme that you'll notice in these images is vibrancy. It's the community coming together, it's food, it's beverage, it's retail, and what we really specialize in our mind is curating the perfect mix of all of those different uses, residential, office, hotel. And, and that's not an easy feat and we've, we've paid quite a bit of tuition along the way to figure out how to get that done. Here's another example project out in the Salt Lake MSA, which recently delivered just this past year, Mountain View Village. And what we're proposing for, for Project Elevate here on the screen is really, it's a medium-density mixed-use project that we believe delivers on the vision of creating a hub for not just Elk Grove, but for the region, something that's interesting and unique and exciting. It's centered around a town square concept, which is about half an acre as shown on the plan. The current concept includes about eighty thousand square feet of retail, that's services, retail, food and beverage, about eleven thousand square feet of second floor use, primarily office as contemplated, a hundred and twenty hotel keys and over two hundred apartment units, which as Darrell mentioned, fifteen percent of which would be affordable, which would be a real honor to bring that to the community. Here's a site plan that better illustrates how the uses are interacting. So you've got a southeast corner that's got the hotel component with some retail adjacent. You've got three, what we call pad buildings, so these are outlawed buildings that would be fronting Elk Grove. We imagine those being larger-scale full-service restaurants that really benefit from that visibility and they draw people in, in our experience. So those are really anchors to the project. You know, most shopping centers that get built today, they're grocery anchored or they're anchored by big box retail. There was a little bit of a moment with our CEO where he looked at me and said, where's the anchor? But we've really come to realize, especially through the pandemic, that these projects don't necessarily need a traditional anchor. What they need are the things that drive people outside of their homes. And for us, that's, that's food and beverage, that's fitness. People are tired of being on that Peloton and so they're going out to group fitness classes, they want to be around other people, and it's entertainment. It's really the things that you can't get from Amazon, that you can't get from a screen. And in our business, our biggest competition is not other properties, it is other forms of entertainment that people consume at home. Our job is to get them motivated to leave their homes, to come out in the real world and to interact with their community around them. So that brings us to the Central Park concept in the middle. What we've done is we've oriented the remainder of the commercial retail buildings around the Central Park. So when you're inside of that town center, you really feel like you've been transported to a new place. So that's why it's so important to have that activation on all three sides. These parks have taken different forms in every project and we're excited to work with you guys and the community at large to really understand what's a priority, what's important, what do people want to see here that would really activate that. But varieties of uses have included large-scale fountains, smaller-scale plazas and tenant activations, stadium seating for outdoor concerts. Again, these have really become the center of cities. We've had a lot of great partnerships in our career as a company in working with the cities to help them host the annual Christmas tree lighting, Santa viewing. We were talking about fireworks earlier. We've done plenty of Fourth of July firework experiences and that's really where we as a company pride ourselves. That's what it takes, having the staffing at the property level that we do, that most retail companies try to avoid, is what makes the difference. That's really where the magic happens, is in our operational excellence. We have a general manager on site, an operations manager, a marketing manager. These are the people that are living and breathing in your community and programming these sites from morning till night, week in and week out, on special events on the holidays, and we're really excited about the potential to create a venue to do just that here in Elk Grove. The balance of the property would go to residential. As it's shown, it's primarily surface parked with tuck-under garages, three to four stories in height. So what you're really getting is a mix of densities and heights and uses that doesn't exist in Elk Grove today. The tallest apartment building is two stories, as far as I am aware. The tallest apartment building is two stories, as far as I am aware. You know, we imagine this hotel being something unique to the community that really adds to the vibrancy of the overall project. And what it really gets down to from here is the fine-grained details that, here's a little bit more detail on just the overall programming of the site, and I can come back to this and answer questions. But for us, where we get excited is in the details. It's in the architectural approach. We have such a passion for creating buildings that drive excitement, that drive interest, and filling those with great retailers that are relevant to the communities they serve. Same with the multifamily components, working to create a place, really, we want to create a place that people want to come and spend their days, not just to shop and to eat, but to live and to work. These are examples of some of those public spaces that I mentioned earlier. And it comes down to the details of when you're walking from your car to the center of the project, what are the textures, what are the patterns, what are those little moments as you turn a corner that carry you to the next point, that carry you to the next point, that get you to slow down, to put your phone down, and to really feel like you're in a special place? And again, I think the key to all of this is then taking that platform and that blank canvas and activating it with tenants, with great programming, and with the community getting engaged. One thing that we want to mention that was a huge priority that was shared by Jason, by Daryl, by staff, by the ad hoc committee, and by the council members, is just making sure that, they challenged us to be thoughtful in how we designed it, to not, you know, the project might not be as dense as the original plans, and again, what we want to make sure we share here today is a project that we can deliver on today, instead of waiting for the next economic cycle. And we think that we can deliver the amenities that we're talking about to the community in addition to the base project, without necessarily having to compromise the ability to add more density in the future. And so, we worked tirelessly to come up with a plan that would allow us to, if market conditions supported it, or if there was additional funding available, to be able to densify the project with structured parking, and with additional market rate and affordable housing units, bringing even more vibrancy to the project. I believe that's my whole portion, but I'm here to answer questions, and again, I'm just, we're so humbled that you guys would select us and engage with us to have the chance to work with you on this, and we're really excited to keep working and to getting to know more community members while we're out here in the beautiful town of Elk Grove. Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Daryl, is there, okay.
Oh, there's more.
Yeah, I thought so.
There's a little bit more. I'm gonna
But wait, there's
Wrap up with some much less interesting key terms of this letter of intent that you're being asked to consider tonight. So, some of the key terms, just quickly. The parties, under the LOI, the letter of intent, the parties will work exclusively to negotiate a purchase agreement for council consideration. So a letter of intent is merely the intent, you know, it's an expression of intent to bring back a definitive agreement to you, which is what we call the purchase agreement. So if all goes well through this negotiation process, in the next 180 days, we will bring back a negotiated, ready-to-sign purchase agreement for your consideration. So there are some key steps that we need to undertake in the next 180 days. One is we need to complete appraisals on the property so that we can define its fair-market value. We need to agree on a price based on those, based on those appraisals. We need to complete a level of conceptual planning sufficient for the purchase agreement to specifically define the scope and scale of the project, and we need to negotiate that purchase agreement. So if we do all that, we will bring that back to you. ESCRO would be open when the purchase agreement is approved, not approved, not as a result of this LOI tonight. If you approve the purchase agreement, what it will stipulate, because we've pre-negotiated much of this in the letter of intent, is that closing can occur, or would occur, when entitlements and initial building permits are secured. That construction can and would commence within one year of that closing. If, however, due to market conditions or other conditions that are unforeseen, if the developer was diligently pursuing the project, we are building in a series of one-year extension options for construction, up to five, into the agreement. There is a cost to exercise those options, as you see in the next bullets. So option years one and two would come at a cost of $100,000, and those would be at the developer's discretion. Option years three, four, and five would have escalating costs, up to $500,000, and those would then include some reasonable discretion by the city. So basically, if the developer just needed another year or two to be ready to break ground, they could exercise these extension options. If they got past the second extension option, then they would need the city's approval to exercise any of options three, four, and five. But under the agreement, we have to be reasonable with exercising that discretion, and what that means is if the developer was diligently pursuing the project and had not abandoned the project, then we would be obligated to approve those extension options. Also, under the LOI and in the purchase agreement, the city would have the right to purchase the property back from the developer if construction did not start or construction stalled and was not completed. So that is a nice benefit for us, and we're also agreeing under the LOI that during this next 180-day phase, the city and the developer will split those conceptual planning costs 50/50, up to a cap of $250,000 for the city. So there's the key letter of intent terms. Next steps, we need to, we need to get your approval tonight, if so willing, in which case we would sign the LOI. We would then complete those appraisals I mentioned and establish the purchase price. We would complete that conceptual planning, we would negotiate that purchase agreement, and we would come back to you for consideration of the purchase agreement within 180 days, which if we took that full-time, that would be approximately October. And then if that purchase agreement was approved by this council, we would then open ESCRO. The developer would go through the process, working with our development services team of securing entitlements and building permits. We estimate that to take approximately 12 to 18 months. Then there would be a close of ESCRO, and again, a start of construction within approximately 12 months. So that is my presentation tonight. Again, the recommended actions are to receive this update and to approve the letter of intent with CenterCal, and I and Scott are available to answer any questions you might have.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. We have one person signed up to speak, Sharon Anderson.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Rod. We have some of the most gorgeous sunsets in Elk Grove and beautiful sunrises. One thing I didn't notice on the conceptual plan is any rooftop dining, rooftop features, any of that. I would love, did you guys already talk about that?
No.
One person has been saying that.
That was my opening question for everyone.
Yeah, so West Roseville, because my mom used to live there, she now lives at the park at Laguna Springs, as you all know, because you met her. They have, it's a small retail, but the way that they integrated some of the rooftop components was just phenomenal. There are some places in downtown Sacramento where the actual housing has integrated rooftop. We need to let our people see more than just, you know, a neighbor's wall or whatnot. Let's get Elk Grove into the business of rooftop dining and living. We just don't have any, right? We have zero? Zero. We have zero. Let's do it.
Were you hired by Councilmember Robles?
I was just gonna say, too. Scott's never heard that before.
No. So that was our final public comment speaker for this item, so I will close the public comment opportunity and open it up for discussions, and since we're on a very popular subject of rooftops, we'll start with you, Councilmember Robles.
I'll actually, I know Councilman Soon has been working on it for several years, so I'd actually like to start with you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
But I just want to make sure that whenever we're ready, I'm ready to make the motion, but we'll start with you.
Well, where to begin? First of all, for the longest time, I think all of us have heard from our residents, we need some more fun things to do in Elk Grove, right? I mean, that is a common theme we've heard, and I want to, you know, this is really special to me because I've told a few of you the story before, but starting my career a long, long time ago, down in Orange County and going to the Irvine Spectrum Entertainment District when it was first built, and seeing that for the first, there's nothing else like it. I never, in my wildest dreams, you know, when I moved back up here, looking for something like that, but never in my wildest dream would I think I would be in a position today to have a small part in having, you know, trying to make this happen, and so that's why it's just really special to me, and I want to, I want to thank all of, you know, the team, Ken Turnon, all the staff, everybody's just put so much work into everything. Obviously, CenterCal and their interest in the time they've invested. I know, Scott, I think you flew back from Florida just to be here tonight, so I really appreciate that. But I also want to thank, you know, the community of Elk Grove for setting the, you know, basically setting an environment that welcomes something like this, and our partners, Pappus Investments, for all their projects that they've done, whether it's Costco or Whole Foods or Yard House that's come in, all these, Nordstrom's Rack, I mean, all these things that have continued to set the tone and reinforce what I have long believed in that there's so much demand here in Elk Grove for people to go out and have a good time, you know, not just spend money, but like have an experience with their families and themselves, their friends. And so, all this has created, I think, an environment where we were searching for that perfect partner, and we found a lot of great talent locally, you know, with SKK, and again, Pappus Investments and others, and I think it was a challenge, really a challenge for us to settle on something, and we thought we had someone, you know, that, with Heinz, it fell apart, and then, again, how are we going to make this happen? You know, and there was a lot of doubt with, for some, I think, in the community, but we kept searching, and I think, I think Daryl Slides mentioned five years, you know, it finally took, and sometimes, you know, that perfect relationship, I think, sometimes, you know, can happen, and I mean, in the way that I think what's unique about this potential partner is the operations, is the details that was mentioned earlier by Mr. Borer. When we were in Tacoma, the, seeing staff out there, you felt like you were in a mini Disneyland, you know, to see staff out there picking up the trash and cleaning things, just like you would see in the amusement park. I'd never seen anything like that in a mixed-retail development, and so, that, I think, that operations, those operations, I think, really, you know, sold me in addition to this placemaking that seems to be consistent with all their properties. So again, you know, with all that, I'm, you know, I'm in strong support of this, of CenterCal going forward with them and looking to take the next step. I'll defer. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Soon, for sharing the backdrop of what, it sounds like what we're about to enter, because it takes a while to create an environment of excitement. It takes perseverance to keep the machine going, even when it looks like all is lost. When Heinz, unfortunately, could not move forward with the project, the Subcommittee of Councilmember Soon and Councilmember Robles, along with Mr. Doan and the city team, went out and actively looked for someone who can pick up the baton and keep running with it, and that's, and thank you to Turnon Commercial Real Estate and CenterCal for being a part of that. I want to thank Scott Borer specifically, because I had the opportunity of meeting with him with the mayor a couple of weeks ago, and it was a day where I felt like I was in a hurry, I had to like get back to my, to my day job, but just sitting down and just relaxing for a little bit, I got a chance to learn a little bit more about Scott, about the projects he's worked on, and where, and where he's traveled, and anyone who can pronounce the words Tulare perfectly gets extra points. And part of that perseverance is a focus where we know if we stay in communication, stay working with each other, and just stay on the road to seek the right solutions. I think this Project Elevate project that has been long in the waiting is going to be something special for the city. And I think when you have the mixed use that is coming into play for this, and to see how it works in other towns in the western region, I think Elk Grove would be, would benefit greatly by having a site of this magnitude. I definitely support it, I'm not going to say anymore, because I think, I think Councilmember Soon summed it up best. This is, this is something that is, that is a long time waiting, and I want, like I said, I commend Subcommittee members Soon and Robles to working with the city and making all this come together to where we're at right now. So, big words, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I travel frequently to Utah, and previously I stayed in many hotels, but there was a hotel that I really enjoyed in a place called The Station, and it's in, it's in, I just forgot what it's called, it's not Kay'sville, what is it again? Anyway, it's, but it's near Hill Air Force Base, and I stayed there in the hotel every time that I went, probably two to three days, and every time I'd look out the window and I'd look out into the, into the area there, and I would, you know, I would see, just as Councilmember Soon described, folks down at street level, picking up, cleaning up, you know, just manicuring lawns, taking care of the shrubbery. It really was almost like a Disneyland field. I had no idea that that was a CenterCal product. So I've been interacting with CenterCal products for, I don't know, probably about eight years now. And so, when we heard, when I'd heard that it was CenterCal, I did some looking up, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, that's Station, The Station," and it's a product that I really appreciate. It's very vibrant. There's, you know, lawn space and restaurants and, you know, theaters, and, I mean, that's, you know, we don't know exactly what we're going to get in this yet, right, the specifics, but what I can tell you is that if they can deliver something lively like that here to Elk Grove, I think Elk Grove will be very lucky to have something like that. So, I think I'll stop there. I support it, and I thank the Subcommittee for their work. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Robles?
I'll try to keep my comments brief, but I am super excited about this project, just along with Councilman Soon. One of my things was a rooftop bar in a rooftop restaurant or a rooftop something with the hotel, because it brings experience, and everyone talked about experience, but CenterCal was able to just address it head-on. They talked about experience, they talked about fitness, and talked about excitement. And that's something that you want when you want in a development. Not only that, but I've had the opportunity to take Mr. Borer, Scott, out to Midtown, to the favorite, my favorite areas, where to go eat, coffee shops, restaurants, brunch spots, because Elk Grove is still in need of a brunch spot, to show them around what kind of excitement young professionals who, and people who are trying to scale down, who would have potentially live here, would want. And it's been nothing but a great experience, so I'm pretty excited about this, I'm excited for what's to come. I know that there was, you know, for whatever happened on the, before we got on council, you know, whatever happened with Heinz, it happened, but now we're moving forward, and I'm pretty excited to be a part of this process, and just excited for what's to come in Elk Grove.
Thank you. I think a lot of great things have been said, and I do believe everything happens for a reason, and I'm very pleased with this proposal and your vision. It was a delight meeting with you, Scott, and your passion is infectious, and it's, you know, you don't just work there, you are an amazing brand ambassador, and that goes a long way. long way. That goes a long way. So I want to thank also the Subcommittee members and especially you, Councilmember Soon, because I know you've been part of this journey for the longest. And, um, thank you for your tenacity and, and really working hard to seeing this through. It means a lot. And, and all of that hard work come to fruition. So, you know, this, I absolutely believe once, you know, we're up, when it's up, the vibrancy, you can see it in the pictures, but I can feel it. You can smell it. Like it's, this is going to be amazing. And, you know, I think I do share the passion there for, for rooftop dining options or just, you know, and we have wonderful weather here in California, particularly in Elk Grove. And so it's also part of showcasing where we live. So I do think that, that there's a great opportunity there. This is going to be in the heart of our city, creating this sort of, um, new downtown, if you will. And we, where we have bookends, where we have old town and celebrating our heritage, but our bright future, which is Right Here Project Elevate, um, which will ultimately be, I think, the crown jewel of Elk Grove and a shining example for, for the region as well. So I'm very excited about this. Um, and thank everyone, staff and all of the team for getting us here. So with that, I would like to hear a motion.
I'd like to move Staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Daryl Doan. I am still your Economic Development Director. Uh, you get a, you get a two for one tonight from me. So the item in front of you, item 9.3, is to hold a public meeting to receive information on modification of the Elk Grove Tourism Marketing District and its Management District Plan, and no council action is expected or required this evening. Um, so, an important part of our economic development strategy is tourism and visitation. Um, and as part of that, my office oversees our tourism, uh, marketing district and our relationship with Visit Elk Grove, who runs that district for the city. And so tourism marketing districts are, um, special districts authorized by state law. They can be formed, modified and/or renewed at the request of hotels in the district. Um, the purpose and services of the marketing district are delineated in a document called a Management District Plan. So in 2015, we formed our own, um, tourism marketing district, uh, by the council, and it had an initial five-year term. Um, there was a 2% assessment charged within that district on room night stays in the city and 1% on room night stays, uh, in a small portion of our district, which is actually in the county. Um, I'll get into that in a minute. Um, in 2020, uh, the district was renewed for a seven-year term. So we liked it. It worked, we think. Um, and after the initial five-year term, in 2020, we established a new seven-year term. And at that time, because we thought things were working well, we increased the assessment from 2% to 3%. Um, so the way these work, uh, when you stay at a hotel, uh, you usually pay a local tourism assessment or tax. In this case, it's an assessment. Um, and that is collected by the hotels. Uh, that money is remitted, uh, to the city on a monthly basis. And then we remit it to Visit Elk Grove, who is our nonprofit operator of, of your tourism district. Um, Visit Elk Grove is a private nonprofit corporation that the city forms specifically to administer your district. Um, Visit Elk Grove uses the assessment funds, uh, to market Elk Grove as a visitor destination. It's important to note that all of this happens because the hotel businesses within the city petitioned us originally to form this district and have petitioned us. Uh, now this will be the third time to make, uh, changes and to renew and to extend the district. So they seem to like it as well. Um, there are seven hotels in the district. Six of these are in the city. Um, all of them are in the city except for the Fairfield Inn and Suites, which is in a tiny portion of the district that is in unincorporated Sacramento County. So, uh, Visit Elk Grove is our partner in this. Um, again, Visit Elk Grove is a nonprofit, a corporation that exists solely to administer this district. Um, they have wonderful board members, um, four, five of them at the moment, a couple of which are here tonight. I don't know if I'm going to see everybody. Kimberly, Kimberly is here. Kimberly is amazing. She's been with us since 2015, when we started this, and I think has been an officer of the board the entire time. So, um, many thanks to her. And then we have, uh, our very own Sarah Rodriguez, who is, uh, a board member and secretary. When I, when, when I put her on the board, I gave her strict instructions not to get drug into an officer position, but then she came back literally from the first meeting and was an officer. And then, um, the fabulous Ms. Erin Vow is the CEO of Visit Elk Grove. So these are our partners right now, um, in administering this district. So the item in front of you tonight modifies your district in five important ways, um, if you approve it. So it will increase the assessment from 3% to 4% of the portion of the district, within the portion of the district in the city, and from 1% to 2% of the portion that is in the county. So on the right is the map of the district. It looks almost exactly like the city limits, except right up here, if you see my cursor, is a little tiny portion that's in the county where the Fairfield Inn and Suites sits. Um, we will establish a new budget and service category called Destination Development. This category does not exist in the budget or service list now. What this is, is it will set aside 5% of, uh, the annual budget, um, to be used to identify, um, new facilities that could drive visitation to the city. So some cities have event centers, some cities have fairgrounds, some cities build, um, basketball facilities in order to attract tourism business and drive events. So we will be able to use for the first time some of that money, um, to study the need for those additional facilities and to analyze their feasibility. Uh, we will also be extending the term of the existing district from seven years to 10 years. So we're going to add, with your approval, we're going to add three more years onto this district. Um, maximum allowed by law is 10 years, and that will take the district from its current termination date of March 31st, 2027 to March 31st, uh, 2030. Uh, that will just extend the runway by which Visit Elk Grove and their board members and these funds can be spent and planned for, and will really cement the legacy of this, um, of this district, uh, in the city for the maximum amount of time possible. We also want to make changes to the VEG Board composition. So the Board of the Nonprofit, Visit Elk Grove, um, what we want to change is to say, we want to allow the Board to expand, right? In a very thoughtful, methodical way. And part of that expansion is, so that what we would do is we would, we would preserve the control of the Board by the assessment paying hotels. Critically important, right? This, they are the ones who foot the bill. They need to control the Board. So the new bylaws will say that there will always be a majority of hotel owners, uh, controlling the Board. We will maintain our one-city seat. We've always had a city seat. And then we will be able to expand the scope of the Board to include non-hotel businesses. Currently, they participate in an advisory capacity. With this change, some of them will be able to participate as voting directors of the Board. Um, but those additional Board seats must be filled by tourism-related businesses. So think restaurants, wineries, event center operators, people who have a vested interest in business. I think this is smart because the hotel will always control the Board, but we will bring additional perspective. It takes more than just hotels to make Elk Grove a tourism and visitor destination. It takes all of those other amenities that I mentioned. So they will have a voice on the Board now. And then finally, we will update the district boundaries, um, to mirror current city boundaries. And the only change since we created the boundaries in 2015 is that we annexed, um, 400 acres on Grantline Road, uh, which you know as Grantline Business Park where Kabota is. So that will now come into the district. And as any new hotels get developed in the city, and there are four or five in our pipe, which we desperately need those rooms, um, they will automatically become part of this, um, district and will pay the assessment. So it is a complicated process, uh, to amend, uh, to modify one of these districts. Um, there are four or five steps. Step one is to introduce a resolution of intent, uh, to, um, amend or modify the district, which you did at the March 27th, 2024 City Council Meeting on Consent. So thank you for that. Um, also, on that night, you, um, approved a resolution requesting the consent of the county to these changes, um, because a portion of the district is in the county. So thank you for that. Um, in order to make changes to the district, the hotel assessment payers have to petition the city. So they ask us to do that through a formal petition process. So we also received petitions on March 27th, 2024. Um, we received petitions in favor of modification from four of our seven hotels that total approximately 55% of the proposed assessments. Uh, and with 50% or more, we can move forward. Um, we also had to notice all the hotel owners. They have to have 45 days' notice before the final public hearing, which is coming up. So that notice was sent out by our very helpful City Clerk's Office on March 29th. That notice went to all the hotels. So they, uh, officially know that this is happening, although they already knew. And, uh, they can support or protest as they see fit. Um, we have to hold a public meeting, which is tonight. Again, no council action is required. This is just an opportunity for the public to hear what we're doing and for any interested parties, including our petitioners, to come forward, um, and support or protest. Um, we have to obtain that county consent, so that is tentatively scheduled for May 7th, um, in front of the Board of Supervisors. And then finally, there is a final public hearing, which is required, which we have tentatively scheduled, depending upon whether we have county consent for May 22nd. So at that final public hearing, um, if at that time we receive written protests from 50% of the hotel owners, um, then no further proceedings would, would take place. And then after that public hearing, um, you would have the opportunity to, uh, renew and modify the district by resolution, or you could choose not to do that and leave the current district and the Management District Plan and all of those changes unchanged. Um, so what this will do for us and why I'm recommending this is, uh, currently the budget for the district is about $670,000, $75,000. And that's with the 3% assessment in city limits and 1% and the seven years. So by making this small increase of 1% to the assessments, we will bring in approximately another, uh, $350,000 money that, uh, Erin and her team can spend, um, under our contract with them, um, uh, to just do more of what they do, which is, I think, the great job that they do, marketing Elk Grove as a visitor destination, attracting events here and advocating for the interests and rights of hotels, restaurants, wineries and event centers. Um, so you may be curious to know where that 4% assessment will rank. So we're not unique in having these districts. There are 300 or so around the state. Um, and in our region, uh, these, this chart shows all of the, um, tourism marketing districts. Um, and you see in that middle column, the, the assessment amount of 4%. Uh, we will not be the highest. We will not be the lowest. We will be on the upper end, but I think that is, um, manageable and something that, uh, the guests of these hotels, uh, can absorb. Um, and then you also see when we combine the TOT, which is not technically a part of this, but on your bill, right? You, you get both. Um, when we combine those two things, again, we will be on the upper end in the district, but we will be equal with Sacramento unless in Rancho Cordova. And again, I think that is, um, for the kind of city that we are trying to be and the kind of job that we are trying to do with tourism, I think that's necessary and appropriate. And, um, the market will absorb these changes. So again, my recommended action tonight is that you hold this public meeting, which you are, um, and you do not have to take any, um, council action. That is the end of my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions. And also, Erin, um, Ms. Vow can answer any questions you might have of her as well. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for that great presentation. I will open up public comment. Uh, nobody has signed up for this. I'll close the public comment opportunity. I'll just start with some of my comments, um, since I have a lot of background in this area. As a statewide commissioner for Visit California, I really appreciate that we're expanding the Board, which is necessary outside of the, just the hotel segment. Like, Visit California, we have, um, anything you can imagine under the tourism umbrella. It's hotels, it's rental cars, it's theme parks, um, wineries and, and all of that. Uh, you know, great big restaurants, Frank Fats, um, Kevin Fats on, on the executive committee. So having those diversity of voices as the city continues to grow, um, marketing all of our amazing amenities is going to be important. I know that statewide, travel and tourism is one of the top job creators. And so similarly, this will definitely boost our local economy. So, big, um, supporter for these great efforts. And I want to thank you, Erin, for all of the great work that you are doing and continue to do on the Board to market and showcase Elk Grove. And there's definitely more to come, as you can see. So, thank you for all of that, uh, great work. Any, um, I'll turn to the left here. Any questions, comments?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the, the information that you shared. And, um, just wanted to get, commend, uh, Mr. Doan and, and Ms. Vow as well. Uh, you, you guys have been partners for a while. And, uh, having, I think this reorganization makes a lot of sense. So, look forward to, uh, seeing how things develop in the future. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. No, I, I, in, in a nutshell, uh, this is good. I mean, modifying the marketing district will help us in a, in a number of ways. And so it's, it's something that needs to be done now as opposed to plain catch-up. So, thank you for putting together this report, Mr. Doan. I want to thank Explore Elk Grove, um, and Ms. Vow, um, and Ms. Rodriguez, and working with our, 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 our hotel, our tourism community, um, to help lay down the groundwork for, for any and all possible improvements and work that is going to be done in, in the coming future. This is good stuff. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Oh, sorry. Councilmember, yeah. I know. Once upon a time. I'm getting tired. Councilmember Spees now? Councilmember Robles? All right. Thank you. So this doesn't require action, so I just want to thank everyone for the work. We will move on to our next item, 9.4.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Thanks for having me speak today on this amazing program called the Event Sponsorship Grant Program that we have here for the city of Elk Grove. I'm going to share some information with you and look for some direction from you on how to allocate the funds. Um, before I even start and give you some of the background, I just want to say I love this program and I love that we're able to help so many of our nonprofits here in Elk Grove. Being an event producer myself, I know all the work that goes into it. And I know that having help and having funding is something that they rely on. And it's really neat that we're able to provide this for these nonprofits in town. Um, the grant program was started in 2012, and it was supported by the General Fund. And there is a standardized application process to promote fairness and equitability among the grantees that are, are applying. And there is criteria too, to ensure that the sponsorship funding is focused on events with citywide significance and that meet the city's goals. It is limited to nonprofit organizations that hold their events here in Elk Grove. And but programming and operations are ineligible, and we have other grants for those programs. And as you can see on the pictures here, that top one, that's from Ex-Hope Denim and Diamonds, uh, Diamonds. And the bottom one is the Strauss Festival, which I'm sure many of you have been to. Talking about the application process, so you understand, um, how it happens. We released the application in mid-January, and we do advertise it in The Citizen on our website. We promote it heavily on social media. We send an email directly to all of the previous applicants, anyone that throughout the years have come to us out of the time of the grant application that might be interested and others that we think should be applying because we know that their events could use our help. Um, everything's submitted online. We moved to an online application years ago, and we have a new system called Web Grants. It's really great, really easy to use. And we did hold a technical webinar with the other grant programs. So Alicia and myself held a technical webinar. And lots of new nonprofits were there, which was really neat to see. And so we helped walk them through how to use the online applications. And then they were due at the end of February. And just to note, so you know, all of our grantees have to be in good standing with the Secretary of State as well as the Registry of Charitable Trust. And that's throughout the entire program of the grant. So before, when we even got these online, we checked everyone, checked their statuses, saved their statuses. Before we enter into a contract, we check them again. And before we do any payments, we check them again. And if they're not in good standing, we don't pay until they can get themselves into good standing. For this year, we received 41 eligible applications, which is probably the most we've received in a while, which was really neat. in a while, which was really neat. Nice to see some new people, too. And we had a total amount requested, which exceeded $750,000. And that includes cash and in-kind. And we talk about in-kind, that's like police services, traffic management, facility use, integrated waste for trash carts, recycling, things like that. And we do have a really great department that reviews these, multi-departmental. That includes the PD, Public Works, Public Affairs. We have some outside agencies join us, and we all get in a room and we go over all of the applications. And what we're looking at is the event concept, the feasibility. If there's a prior performance, we can look at post reports and see how many people were in attendance. Can they attract regional visitors and kind of bring that regional visitation to Elk Grove? What is the budget they're asking for? Isn't it reasonable? And what's the impact they're having? Is this an event with citywide significance that'll bring people here to Elk Grove? You have all of them in front of you. I'm not going to go through each one and, and, you know, explain what they are. I can highlight some of the new ones. Again, when we talk about total support, that could be cash, in-kind, police services, integrated waste, facility use, et cetera. We have a lot of really great events, obviously, coming back this year. We've got Artners with two of their events. They just held Dia de la Concha recently with all the sweet treats, and Dia de los Muertos is a really popular one of theirs. And we've got the American Legion Post 233. MLK Breakfast is a new one. We've been involved in this, and we have a new nonprofit that has applied to produce this event, so that's really exciting. Camden Music by the Lake, very popular, very popular. The Veterans Day Parade coming back. Some more of the American Legion Post 233 events. Bounty on the Boulevard, which is a really nice event over at District 56 that provides scholarships for a lot of local Elk Grove students. Elk Grove Fine Arts, they've got a festival, actually, this Saturday at the Plaza, if you guys want to go and see it. They've applied again to bring that back. The Food Bank, they have a new event they've applied for this year, which is a 50th anniversary celebration, celebrating 50 years here. The Historical Society has applied for the Spring Tea and the Christmas. And they also have a new fundraiser called Raise the Barn. So they're going to get that barn fixed out there. Beloved Holiday Parade of Lights coming back with the Elk Grove Lions Club, and that kind of ties into the Illumination Festival. We've partnered with them to do those side-by-side, which has been really, really fun. Running of the Elk, which we just had recently, and they had the most runners they've had in a long time, and that was a big success. Franklin High School Invitational Band Review, the Carnitas Feed, which is coming up. And then we had Laguna Sunrise Rotary Club, who is taking over the run for Independence from the Food Bank, so the Food Bank can focus on their 50th anniversary, but it still will be benefiting two food banks. So they're going to take that on this year for them, which is really cool. And they're also bringing back Taste of Elk Grove. Dia de los Miles is a new one to the grant program. They've been hosting it in Elk Grove, but they hadn't applied for funding before. They had been paying out of pocket, so happy to recommend support for them. Dickens. We also have a new Dreams in Motion Elevate Elk Grove, which is a walk from Rise Women in Business. The Sacramento Asian Pacific Cultural Village is coming back with their event, and that's also coming up, and that's a really big event, and they host that at District 56 and have a lot of vendors out there. Another new one is from the Seroptimist Club, and it's Martinis and Merriment Strauss Festival. We had a flamenco concert, which is new to us this year, which is great for our diversity thing that we're doing here. And Bubble Frenzy is new. That's been happening at the park, and they had worked with CSD, and they reached out to us for a grant. And the Lunar New Year event, which happened at Elk Grove Park this past February, they have applied officially with us. And then we have Ex Hope coming back with their Evening of Hope Denim and Diamonds event, which you saw that photo there. So we're looking for your recommendation tonight on the, on the full ask for all of these groups to supply help, support, cash, police, public works, integrated ways. And we're looking for a direction from you to adopt this as part of our budget.
Well, thank you for that presentation. I will go ahead and open up public comment opportunity. We will start with Sharon Anderson, followed by Sarah and Greg Rudes, Root? I'm not sure. But Sarah and Greg.
Okay, I'm switching hats. I am now the president of the Camden Neighborhood Association. So ignore the eyeballs. That was from a Halloween event because we, in Camden, we're all volunteers, and we host a litany of events in Camden. So we're a mini, like a mini CSD because we put on so many different events. They're all community. Anybody can come to them. But the one that everybody loves is our Music by the Lake. I know you like it. I know you, everybody, I know you like it. Everybody likes Music by the Lake because it's music by the lake. And we all dance. It's wonderful, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're being considered. Thank you so much for continuing, Jody, to reach out to us and remind us that, you know, we can submit an application for the grant. I hope you vote yes for us, but our, is my time up? Boy, I just got, well, I, where was I? Talking about Music by the Lake. Thank you, Hope, and thank you to my marvelous board in Camden and all the volunteers that helped put this on because we don't hire anybody to do it. And when, you know, we have the in-kind services, that helps us a lot, too, because in the past, we were begging CSD for extra garbage cans, and then we would have to change them out ourselves. But, you know, with the recycling, because we, we generate a lot of waste there. Hope you come. It's September 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next up is Sarah and Greg. Are you speaking separately or together?
Together.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers and staff. My name is Sarah Rudes, and I'm the Vice President of the Board of the Elk Grove Aquatics Club, formerly known as the Consubnus Rivers Aquatics Club. First, I would like to thank you all for letting me speak tonight and for giving our club the opportunity to apply for this grant for the 2024-2025 Event Sponsorship Grant. I wanted to come here and tell you all a little bit about our club and, if awarded, what we would do with the grant money. I'm sure, as you can guess, we are a year-round USA competitive swim team, and we call the Elk Grove Aquatic Center our home. We have added 46 new swimmers to our team just in the last year, and we live by our motto, "Never settle." And we do our best to develop well-rounded, character athletes who do more than just enough and never settle for just enough. This is the gator way. This is our way. If awarded the grant money, the money would be used to help put on our championship home meet called the Bill Rose Classic that would be held at the Elk Grove Aquatic Center, where we are expecting 700 to 800 swimmers and 1,500 to 2,000 spectators. This meet would bring in swimmers and spectators from around California, who would be shopping, dining, and staying around the Elk Grove area. While we do not have an economic impact report for last year's Bill Rose Classic meet, we did bring in $2.4 million for the city of Elk Grove during our Western Zones meet in 20, in 2022. Your continued support allows us to host as many home meets as possible and continues to bring in, and we continue to bring in revenue for the city of Elk Grove. By hosting events like the Bill Rose Classic, it shows the USA Swimming that we are capable of handling large events and will help us bid for longer, for larger championship meets like the Western Zones in future years. I appreciate your time and allowing us to speak, and we look forward to continuously working with the city of Elk Grove.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up is Alma Lopez, followed by Brian Colson, and Brian is our final speaker.
Buenas noches. Good evening. My name is Alma Lopez. I'm the Board Chair of the Latino Center of Urban Culture, and our mission is to foster the artistic, cultural, and economic development of our Chicano-Latino community in the greater Sacramento area. Last year, we kicked off our first youth program. It's called Cultura es Fuerza, Culture is Strength, and it focuses on young people, 15 to 22, learning traditional Mexican dance, their significance, connection to their roots, but also leadership development. And last year, we also partnered with Fleet Feet, Dia de los Miles 5K, which takes place here in Elk Grove. 70% of our youth are from Elk Grove, and so it was a beautiful partnership for us to also have them host their very first performance in their hometown, Elk Grove. And one of the beautiful things about this partnership is that we bring a cultural element to the Dia de los Miles 5K. I know there's some runners here. There's also a mercado, so in terms of the engagement that happens to the community, not just here in Elk Grove, but also from folks that are coming from outside of Elk Grove. 30% of the runners last year are Elk Grove residents, and 69% are folks not from Elk Grove. So there's also an element of tourism and economic development that we're bringing into this, in this event. So we look forward to continuing this partnership, not just this year, continuing to increase the engagement of our community, but also of our young people. This will be their second, their second year for some of them, but it will be our second cohort, and there's also an increase of youth from Elk Grove. So we really support, or appreciate your support, and also appreciate staff for working with us. And Councilmember Sergio Robles, thank you also for your support last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Colson.
Well, here it is, Western Festival time. We thank you for the grants, everything you guys do for us for the Western Festival. I mean, we couldn't do it without you. We do have a problem, and none of us knows where it's coming from. Some wording, some actions, something. We need people to get invested in this and figure it out. I've gone 53 years. I know there's people that's gone longer than me. We've missed it for the last, what, two, three years? There's something that we should do or that we can do, or the minds need to get together with the CSD, with the Fire Department. I don't know any of the language. I don't understand what they're talking about. Wording doesn't mean anything to me. I work hard for everything we do, no matter what it is. And this is one thing that we can't pass up. It's gone downhill for year after year after year, and, and we're all to blame for it. We should all be working hard together for everybody in this community, for this one single event. I mean, it's what Elk Grove was built on. I don't know if the wording's wrong because it's called a Western Festival, or if the wording's wrong because they can't get insurance, or somebody doesn't have enough money and they don't know how to spell it. I just don't understand. So I'm begging for help, along with the rest of the community in our town, in our city, to let's make this thing happen, no matter what. All the kids enjoy it. All the families enjoy it. It's not just something that you just throw to the side because some wording's wrong. The CSD needs to be held accountable for what's going on here. And I think that they're doing our community wrong, and I don't like it. So I feel that maybe some of our council members that know what's going on should at least put it out there or figure it out and let us know what is going on because we don't know. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the grant. Thank you for everything. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Colson. That is our final speaker. So I will close the public comment opportunity, and we're just providing direction for staff. So I'll start to the right. Any questions, comments, direction, changes? Are you good?
Sorry, I forgot to use the mic. Thank you for everyone who applied for these grants and look forward to participating in the events and attending and pretty much just keep my comments short today.
Thank you. You're good, Vice Mayor?
I'm good.
Councilmember Soon?
Yeah, I support staff's recommendation. There's, it's a lot of hard work to evaluate these proposals, so appreciate your work in there.
I, too, concur. I support staff's recommendation. Thank you. And thank you for those that showed up to advocate for your nonprofits and your events. Really appreciate it. Mr. Colson, I'll talk to you after the meeting, if you're still around. But, but just know that, and those that are paying, watching, this is a CSD event. But I, you know, I, but I'm more than happy to talk to you offline. Thank you, sir. With that, we will go on to our next item, and that is Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items. Councilmember Robles?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Spees?
No thanks, I'm good.
Councilmember Brewer, Vice Mayor Brewer?
Tomorrow, the Sacramento Public Library Authority Board meets up at 4:00 at the county offices. So that's going to be on TV, but definitely invite people to sit in the audience and, and participate.
Councilmember Soon?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
My quick report is that there's two of us that did attend cap-to-cap last week, and we had a great opportunity for federal advocacy for dollars on various, we were on various teams, on transportation, public safety, air quality, land use, economic development, and so on. But I wanted to do a special shout-out to Jeff Warner, who led our team very proudly with the Department of Transportation to advocate for funding for the Camera Road Project. We were proudly joined with the Welton Rancheria, and it's that, that collaboration that, that really makes us successful in getting these kinds of dollars. But I really wanted to do a shout-out for you because you did an amazing job, leading, leading all of us and advocating on behalf of our city. So thank you for doing not only an amazing job, but bringing us all together for something very important. So with that, before I adjourn, I do want to adjourn in somebody's memory. Four of us here knew him very well, and it's the passing of Adrian Espinosa. We have not had an opportunity to adjourn in his memory. Wanted to give respect to the family until they were ready to share with the public of his passing. And it was, it was a tragic loss. I watched him grow up. We've all watched him grow up, and it hit hard. And I just, it's a hard one.
26 years old.
26 years old, and our hearts go out to not only his father, Pablo Espinosa, his mother and his stepmother, who are grieving the loss of a promising young man who had a beautiful future ahead. So please keep, keep all your loved ones in your hearts. Give an extra hug to your children, and may his memory be a blessing to all that knew him, including all of us here. Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll adjourn at 9:11.